All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Could I please have roll call?
Yes. Clark?
No, it doesn't work.
I can visibly see him saying he's here. There he is.
There we go.
Dutra? Montesino?
Here.
Parker? Quiros Carter? Salsiro?
Here.
And Orozco?
Here.
We have Quorum.
Thank you. So, item 1.0, introduction of new employees and recognition of retirees. Do we have any introduction of new employees tonight? I think we do, yeah.
Good evening. Courtney Limberg, Public Works and Utilities Director. Excited to have two new employees. First, we'll start with Brian Hicks, who is with our wastewater division. He's been with us about a month. And if you just want to say hello and a little bit about yourself?
Hello. I live up in the Maury Hill area. I've been in the wastewater industry for about seven years now, and looking forward to, excited about starting over here in Watsonville.
Welcome.
And second, we have Miguel joining us, Miguel Lizoraga, who joined us from the City of Santa Cruz as a principal engineer. As you know, we recruited this position many times, so we're very happy to have Miguel joining us. Miguel, if you want to say a few words?
Hi, Miguel Lizoraga. Like Courtney said, principal engineer here at the city now. Have 15 years engineering and construction experience, seven of those with the City of Santa Cruz Public Works. Very excited to be a part of this group now. I was raised here in Santa Cruz County. My grandparents lived here in Watsonville, so it is a bit like coming home. So, I really appreciate the people and working here at the city.
Thank you. Welcome.
We're a better city.
That's it for Public Works. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, and staff. My name is Corey Schaefer, the current acting fire chief, and I am proud to stand beside and introduce to you our three newest firefighters. They've come on in the past couple of months, all of them scattered and a little bit different start dates due to the scheduling. But we have Aiden Palmquist on the far left, Rodrigo Jimenez, and Matthew Seligman. They're currently in their probationary period of instruction, so they have 12 months of taskbooks and rigorous assignments to complete. All of them as well have to accredit as paramedics in the Santa Cruz County area, which serve under the medical director's license, so they're working on their accreditation and their probation. So, I'll have each of them introduce themselves, and if you have any awkward questions for them, feel free to ask.
Hi, I'm Matt Seligman. Grew up in the county here. Excited to work in the county. Come back to the county. I moved away for a while and came back, and I'm happy to be here. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer. Great.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rodrigo Jimenez. I was born and raised here in Watsonville, currently live in Monterey, and it's been my lifelong dream to work for the Watsonville Fire Department, so hopefully I have a long and healthy career.
Okay, welcome aboard.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aiden Palmquist. Like my fellow firefighter said, I'm very honored and very thankful to be here. I've been dreaming about this position for quite some time, so I'm excited to be here, and thank you, guys.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 2.0. Do we have any members of the public who wish to address council on closed session items to, A, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, or item 2B, anticipated litigation? All right, seeing that there's none, we will now recess to closed session.
Welcome to our August 26, 2025 Watsonville City Council meeting. Buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos a la reunión del Consejo Municipal de Watsonville de 26 de agosto de 2025. Can I please have roll call?
Clark?
Present.
Dutra?
Here.
Montesino?
Here.
Parker? Quiros Carter?
Here.
Salsiro?
Here.
And Orozco?
Here.
We have Quorum.
Thank you. Item 3.0, motion to excuse absent council members. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can we get a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Clark?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Quiros Carter?
Aye.
Salsiro?
Aye.
And Orozco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item 4.0, pledge of allegiance. Can I please have Mayor Rotam Crystal, Salsiro, lead us into the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item 5.0, information items. Disbursement and the missed documents reports are available for your reference in the agenda packet. And now on to item 6.0, presentations and oral communications. This time is set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item not on the council agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion should be taken on any item presented, except that any council member may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in a minute and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting or referred to staff for clarification and report. And before I continue, I do have an announcement I always forget to make. To use Spanish interpretation devices, obtain one from the table by the interpretation booth. Turn it on and make sure it is on channel E. To use assisted listening, turn on the device to channel A. If you can't hear, check that the device is on. The volume can be adjusted using the arrow buttons. And please return it before you leave. Para usar los aparatos de interpretación en español, obtenga uno de la mesa junto a la caseta de interpretación. Préndalo y asegúrese de que esté en el canal E. Para usar la audición asistida, use el canal A. Si no puede oír, revise que el aparato esté encendido. El volumen se puede ajustar usando los botones con flechas. Por favor, regreselo antes de irse. All right. All speakers are asked to fill out a speaker card and leave it at the podium. Speakers are asked to announce their name and district in which they live in in order to obtain an accurate record for the minutes. And so with that, we'll move on to item 6.0, oral communications from the public. Do we have any tonight? Feel free to come onto the podium, please.
Hi, my name is Maria Robino, and I am the Healthy Living Director at the Watsonville... Thank you. My name is Maria Robino, and I'm the Healthy Living Director at the Watsonville Family YMCA. I've been working in Watsonville since March, and I continue to be impressed by the dedication the city puts into creating safe and welcoming spaces for youth. From the public library to the nucleus to the youth center, it is clear that you, like the Y, are committed to youth development and strengthening our community. At the Watsonville Family YMCA, we are dedicated to healthy living, youth development, and social responsibility. These values guide everything we do, which is why we are honored to participate in this year's Welcoming Week, a national celebration organized by YUSA in partnership with Welcoming America. Welcoming Week runs from September 12 through the 21st. The week celebrates different cultures, encourages community connection, helps residents feel they belong. Each day has a theme, including education, civic engagement, inclusion, and cultural celebration. At the Y, we see how events like this strengthen our community by creating opportunities for people from diverse backgrounds to connect, share stories, and build understanding and trust. I would like to personally invite you to our facility on September 19 from 5 to 8 p.m. for Know Your Local Leaders Day. This is a chance to engage directly with Watsonville residents while we host a fun, if I were a mayor, activity for the kids. If you cannot attend that evening, I'd be happy to schedule a tour of the Watsonville Family YMCA. I'm leaving you with a flyer listing all of Welcoming Week's events, a QR code for details, and my email in case you have further questions or would like to get involved. We hope to see you at the Y as we celebrate and strengthen our Watsonville community together.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Alexandra Guado. I am the Administrative Analyst at the Watsonville Airport, and I'm here to formally invite you and the community to join us this Saturday, August 30, at our annual airport open house, Fire in the Sky. We have Lee Solomon with KION, who will be emceeing, and we would love to have Mayor Orozco welcome the attendees. This year, we'll have designated parking for council members and the executive team on Aviation Way. I have entry tickets here if you're interested. And if you haven't already seen our commercial, I'd like to share that with you all tonight.
Featuring the best fireworks presentation on the Central Coast. Free parking. Get all the details.
Okay, so I don't know what's going on with the audio, but just like you heard, we will be bringing back the fireworks this year. Again, you're all welcome to attend. Doors open at 4:30. We have our skydive jump and national anthem performance at 6:20. We have a flyover that begins at 6:30, and then we'll conclude the event with our fireworks that will begin at 8:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council. Library Director Martinez. And I just wanted to let you know that September is library card signup month. It may be small, but a library card packs a mighty punch. With it, you can borrow books, audiovisual materials, park passes, hiking backpacks, and access a wealth of e-resources. You can also stream music and movies from your library's collection. Take part in engaging programs like author talks, movie nights, craft theme classes, and poetry workshops. Plus access technology, Wi-Fi, and homework or career resources to support your goals. Whether you're a student, job seeker, entrepreneur, or lifelong learner, it's one card with endless possibilities. So, Watsonville Public Library is celebrating with four new library card designs. New cardholders will get a library card for free, and if you recently lost your library card or would like to replace it, during this month, you'll be able to do so for free for the entire month of September.
Yep. All right, seeing that we don't have any other speakers, I'll bring it back to council for council comments. Councilmember Dutra?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome back. We've been gone for, I think, around seven weeks. And this is always an interesting time of the year because we're now entering fall, and, you know, the holidays will be upon us very, very soon. So, I just kind of wanted to do a really kind of brief overview of a few of the things I did over the summer. We had a wonderful National Night Out. I helped organize and work with part of my community in my district to put on a National Night Out event. It was well attended. I want to thank all the city and staff members and the city council members that came to, you know, celebrate and meet the neighbors. And we look forward to it every single year. The neighbors actually get really excited to help put it on. So, National Night Out was a great hit. Thank you to our police and fire departments as well for being there. Again, the Strawberry Festival, fun times. There was a lot of people, and it was really nice to see people come out and just celebrate communities. So, it's nice to see, you know, especially during these times that could be challenging for a lot of our communities, to actually see, you know, some smiles on faces and people getting together. So, thank you to our, I believe, Parks Department and all the city staff who helped put on the Strawberry Festival. It was a fun time. And then today, I had the honor of touring the Watsonville Animal Shelter on Airport Boulevard. I've lived here my entire life. I don't think I've ever been in it before, but I was curious, and I wanted to see, you know, what it had to offer. And, you know, thank you to the staff and who really work hard to make sure that these animals find a home. I learned that, you know, our county receives about over 5,000 animals are somehow abandoned or found, I mean, in a year. So, and about 60% of them are either returned to their homeowners, or they are adopted, and another 30% are given to foster care. So, I wanted to say thank you to all who are involved with that project because, you know, animals are our family to a lot of us. And they're not just, you know, a fad. They're actually living beings. So, if you have an animal, take care of it. Make sure you do the responsible things. Thanks so much.
Okay, anyone else? Councilmember Quiros Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everyone. As Councilmember Dutra said, it's been a while, but glad to see so many folks here. So, I was not able to go to the Strawberry Festival because I went on a sister city trip to two of our sister cities in Mexico, Tangan Sicuro and Jocotepec, along with Councilmember Montesino and the mayor, and we had an amazing time. This is my second sister city trip, and it was remarkable how many different places remind me of Watsonville. So, I definitely saw the similarities, the commonalities, and I really hope that we can work to strengthen our sister city program because it's just such a wonderful cultural exchange. And it really just highlighted how many different people we have here and how difficult it must be to leave your hometown. But it's so beautiful to me that people have found a commonality in Watsonville and a place that feels like home even though it's super far away. I also had a National Night Out event in my neighborhood, which was pretty well attended. We had a really good time. We had tacos. We had a movie. We had games, face painting. So, it was our first year in our neighborhood, and we're hoping to continue that tradition. On September 6, I will be sitting on a women's panel for women's leadership with the mayor and several other leaders in our community. It is free. It is at the library. It's 1 to 3 on September 6, so I hope you can join us. And I believe, oh, big thank you to staff for the four-way stop. There's a four-way stop that is half in my district and half in, I believe, Jimmy and Casey's district. Anyways, it's a four-way stop at Lincoln and East Smith, and people have been telling me how much safer they feel crossing the street. They were super excited to have safer streets for kids to walk to school. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, staff, and hopefully we can continue the good work. Thank you.
Councilmember Montesino?
Yeah, just good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Watsonville City Council chambers. Just want to echo those sentiments from Councilwoman Quiros Carter about our sister city event. We learned a lot from those two cities because a lot of our community, you know, either have connections to those, Tangan Sicuro, Michoacan, or Jocotepec, so have a lot of connections, a lot of family. We actually visited a town that was, seemed like empty because everybody's here. But then we saw the president from Tangan Sicuro saying, "I saw a guy in Watsonville at the Placita," and then we saw him again in the Placita over there. So, it was just, it's interesting enough coincidence. But like I said, we learned a lot, and we're hoping to strengthen our relationship and hopefully get us at a better pace with them. Yeah, and just kudos to all the National Night Out events. They were really wonderful, especially the youth center that I attended. It was really well organized this year. Like I said, it's a lot of events, a lot of kids, a lot of community. But Jimmy was, you know, you put on a great show. And yours too. Also, I didn't get an opportunity to go to the Strawberry Festival personally, but my family did, and they enjoyed it very much. So, that was really nice. But I also want to thank all the staff, especially Public Works staff, for making all those improvements around town. I drive around town, whether it's personally or professionally, and I've seen, you know, just what, just some paint and some stop signs making improvement around the neighborhoods. So, I really appreciate all the hard work Public Works has been putting in. Thank you.
Councilmember Salsiro?
I just also wanted to briefly touch on National Night Out. I had an opportunity to tour the different locations with Acting Chief Rodriguez and really appreciated that. I loved seeing our Police Activity League's location as well. It's such a great program that our officers have and are continuing to provide youth services and meaningful engagement with law enforcement. I also really enjoyed stopping by the different council members' locations. I got to visit Councilmember Quiros Carter, and I got to visit Councilmember Dutra's location, and that is always a pleasure and great food. So, thank you both for hosting.
All right, so I am next. Can I please pull up the PowerPoint?
Mayor, we do have Casey on...
Okay, I'm so sorry, Casey. I forget you're online. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. I apologize. So, let's go with Casey first.
No worries. Thank you, Mayor Orozco. I know without my presence in the room, you, you know, forget about me. So, I would like to first just thank all of the city staff for all of the hard work and the dedication that everybody puts into this community. I don't think we, the council, really talk about it much or thank them enough. You know, as Councilwoman Quiros Carter brought up, you know, there's a new stop sign in town. There are many new stop signs in town. Thank you so much for that. But there's even smaller things that happen that we don't realize, and I just want to kind of bring some attention to that. So, thank you for all the city staff. I, too, was unable to attend the Strawberry Festival, but I heard it was wonderful. And also, I was able to, I did a full city tour for National Night Out. Due to time constraints, from going from stop to stop, I wasn't able to make it to everybody, so sorry if I missed you. But it was wonderful to see everybody out in the community and having fun and just enjoying all of the beauty that our local area has to give to us. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now I'm next. So, over the past few weeks, I've had the honor of representing Watsonville and reaffirming our sister city partnership in Jocotepec at Tangan Sicuro, and these visits strengthened our international ties. And I'm grateful for both the city leaders for their warm hospitality and sure commitment to uplifting our communities. I also joined Representative Zoe Lafran and local advocates in supporting the renewing the immigration provisions of the 1929 Immigration Act, standing up together for fairness and dignity. At the Watsonville Center, we celebrate Youth and Young Adult Appreciation Day, a meaningful opportunity to recognize our young leadership here in the city of Watsonville. We also marked the grand reopening of Vista Verde in Freedom, and this beautiful affordable housing project now offers stability for 76 local families. I want to say a big congratulations to the PV Chamber Award recipients, especially Laura Owens, Jess Brown, and DeLa Colmena for their contributions to the city of Watsonville and just their leadership. I also had the pleasure of presenting a city proclamation to California Giant Berry Farms, honoring their recognition as the second Harvest Food Bank's 2024 Food Donor of the Year, not only for their contributions of berries, but also for their efforts in aiding the Pajaro flood recovery efforts. We celebrated the new cardiac lab at Watsonville Community Hospital. It was a very intimate gathering along with city manager Tamar Abides and other local advocates and leaders here in the community. I attended the Young Farmers and Ranchers Testicle Festival. That was the first time attending. That was such an interesting, fun event. And of course, the Skilly Corn Barbecue honoring the newest Eagle Scouts and supporting their efforts as well. And during this year's National Night Out, I joined neighbors across the city of Watsonville in, again, building stronger bonds with one another and, of course, the relationship between our community and our law enforcement. I also had the honor of introducing Assembly Speaker Robert Rivas and welcoming him to our community for a coffee visit here in the city of Watsonville, providing our community with the opportunity to ask questions around education, immigration, and other very precious issues here in the community. And just finally, I joined the relief for life and celebrated the 2000 National Project Innovation with the families here in the community. So, they're friends of Watsonville Animal Shelter and on for the family in 2002. So, friends of local shelter by funding, spending, or services, vaccines, medical care, and supplies for animal welfare. In 2013, Folas opened its own clinic to meet growing demand, serving over 200 animals monthly across the tri-county area. Despite challenges, including relocation and ongoing fundraising needs, Folas continues to be a partner with local groups and advocate for animals. Noted by Shannon Henderson and a dedicated board, the organization remains committed to the submission of compassionate animal care and public education. Their continued efforts play a vital role in improving the health and wellbeing of animals throughout the community. And thank you so much for all of your efforts. We appreciate you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Would you like to shout a voice?
Yes, well, we've been doing this a really long time. Yes, well, I've, we've been doing this a really long time. I was here at the beginning when they had an ordinance for the ordinance in 2004. And so, Kim Austin and I fought for that, who was a police officer for 26 years. And so, anyway, so, once we did that, we started doing Spain Neuter for the city. And we did that up with the local vets for, for, let's see, probably for, from 2004 till 2013. And then we had our own clinic on Pennsylvania for 10 years. And then we had to move, so now we're by the California Grill. And we take everybody and we average 3,000 a year. And so, and we do a lot of work with the animal shelter, obviously, and this rescues and everything. So, this has been a long time coming. My mom and I sat in the city councils in 1990 when somebody left money for an animal shelter on Airport Boulevard, and we got it done. And that's how I got to meet all the police officers in 95 because they had to run it a lot. So, I would come in, I was on RBT. And so, I've been doing this a long time, and I'm really excited that we have this tonight. And thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Mayor's Proclamation Recognizing Dientes Community Dental Care. Hi. All right, so, Dientes Community Dental Care has been a key provider of affordable, accessible dental services in Watsonville for over 30 years, serving over 4,000 residents annually and totaling nearly 135,000 visits to date. The organization supports patients regardless of income, insurance, or language, and is expanding its services with a new clinic on Penny Lane to serve 3,000 more people each year. Through multilingual, culturally responsive care, Dientes helps improve the overall health and opportunities of children, adults, and seniors in the community. Dientes' continued growth reflects its rooted commitment to equating healthcare and its dedication to meeting the evolving needs of the Watsonville community. I also had recently, well, not recently, maybe a couple of months, the opportunity to visit the new location. And so, I got to learn a lot more about the services and also the different career pathways that you build for your staff, and that was impressive to see. So, we appreciate you and we welcome you to the city of Watsonville.
Hi, everybody. My name's Sylvia. I've been working for Dientes for 25 years. Started on a little, little office up in Mission Street. We now have our fifth location, second location in Watsonville, just opened this month. We'll be seeing a lot more patients. But first of all, I want to thank Mayor Orozco and from the entire Watsonville team. Yeah, we are happy and look forward to seeing a lot more patients. And yeah, thank you, guys.
All right, and the last proclamation for tonight is a proclamation recognizing Ventures. We love march groups. So, Ventures is celebrating 35 years of working towards a shared and prosperous economic future, where Sidcode, race, gender, or immigration status does not dictate income or wealth. They focus on solutions, knowledge, economic and political power, and neutral prosperity through acknowledging community members to be self-advancemental knowledge. Ventures' work is intentional, explicit about social ambition and gender equity. And we seek to save the environment and the communities of our sisters, sisters and brothers. And we trust that we can assist them in their life, in their lives, in their experience. And we are so excited to be here, to be here. And we wish them good luck. So, we hope that they can help us to improve our communities, to improve our lives. And we hope that they can help us to improve our lives.
We are back. And I'll wait for, I think we have quorum, I think we have, yeah, okay. So where were we? Technical questions, we're done with technical questions, now I'm gonna, oh. Councilmember Montesino?
So. I don't think I'm reading, I'm reading this correctly, on seven R. Seems like we're asking for. Doesn't say like a grand total on just the paperwork. It just says thirty-two thousand to the general funding, thirty-three thousand. Seems misleading.
It's, it's just how you are appropriating it, so, so thirty-two thousand you're appropriating for operations and thirty-three thousand. It's capital improvement, so if you remember. Back in last October when we attended the California League of Cities, we visited a vendor that was in the exhibit hall that had these big lit up structures. Those are things that we can purchase and use it from year to year, that money is allocated to the capital fund. Those thirty-three thousands are to buy things, things that we can reuse. The thirty-two thousand is to run the event, mostly funding, you know, to run a parade on Main Street, it would require some street closures, police. Just kind of like logistical for a special event, and it will be a new special event, so we, that's, we don't have any money currently allocated to, to fund that. In my conversations with both Director Calabacuip and the mayor and the friends have been that now if the council moves. To approve this item, it is our goal to really continue our fundraising efforts and make sure that this is done. In partnership with our business community and, and community at large. And, and be able to create something new for our community that we can look forward year after year, because we will have, you know, the decorations, so next year if we do this event. We wouldn't have to allocate thirty-three thousand dollars, we will be able to do it with less. This year is our initial year, so it's a little bit larger investment, and it's one-time money.
I guess, it's, I understand all of that, and I'm very supportive of all of that, I'm just, I'm just asking, like, you know. I guess for accounting purposes, it seems like, you know, do it this way.
Yeah.
But for like, a person coming from the public. The, doesn't seem like it's fifty-five thousand. That's all I'm, that's all.
It's sixty-five thousand, not fifty, yes.
Like I said, for our county purposes, whatever we do. Like, if they picked up over there, should be more, a little bit more transparent and.
Well, maybe, maybe we can word it differently in the future as a grand total.
That's all I'm saying.
But, but this is the correct legal way of appropriating to the right funds, we actually have a correction.
That's our technical way of doing.
I, I understand.
Public?
I understand.
It's just. Can I follow up with that real quick?
Sure.
Can you maybe talk about a little bit what you're gonna buy in the thirty-three thousand that we're gonna have forever?
I have no idea.
Because I did see that, I did see that booth, and it has a lot of cool stuffs.
That is exactly what we're talking about.
What we're gonna be bringing to our community.
Now you're asking for the secrets.
Yes.
Thirty-three thousand dollars, I'd like to know what we're spending it on.
Yes, so I, I think as, as our city manager alluded to. At many of the conferences that, that many of our staff and council members attend, there's several vendors out there that sell kind of like these grandiose holiday decorations. And we haven't quite a hundred percent landed on which ones we're, we're going to go with, some of it is gonna depend on availability, but we're looking at things like, like giant igloos that you can. Walk into and hang out in. They have these kind of large ornament decorations that light up and change colors that people can take pictures in front of and that sort of thing. They also make these giant kind of like ribbon bows that you can use to decorate buildings or the top of the gazebo at some point, so items like that.
Any more snowflakes to add to the, to the light poles?
Uh, we, we could do that as well, as, as the mayor mentioned, we are, or the friends are investing in a number of, of. Holiday reefs also that will light up, that will sell for sponsorships to help support the operations of this event as well. So those will be added to the snowflakes along with some banners that will, that will kind of complement the, the sponsors donations for the, the reefs.
Yeah, I remember when I grew up here, growing up here. Back in the day, you know, Main Street was always decorated, it was always, I mean, I remember they had like candy canes, I think, on the, on the, on the poles, and. I think there was Santa and a sleigh and reindeer going across Main Street. They, so I just always remember it being, you know, really festive, and then. For a period it kind of went dark, and then, so it's nice to see that we're, you know, bringing cheer back into, you know, our community and especially during the holidays, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's the goal. All right, so now I'll take it back to the public, do we have any? Comments from the public under this item? Okay, seeing that there's none, I'll bring it back for a motion, do we have a motion from council?
Can I just have one more question, I'm sorry?
Sure.
Um, so the, I, I'm looking at the breakdown, and. There are two sections, there's one that says proposed appropriation for one-time fund, and that's thirty-three thousand dollars. And then there's proposed appropriation for event services and event supplies and performances, that's thirty-two thousand dollars. That thirty-two thousand dollars is not one time, so where's that thirty-two thousand dollars gonna come from next year?
We, we will bring it back to the council for a budget appropriation if the council so decide that the event was worth replicating in a future year.
So essentially, if it's successful, we will bake it into the budget then?
We, if, if there is sufficient funding, then yes, that, that will be included in your operational budget of the Parks Department.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Clark?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Giroz Carter?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
And Orozco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, moving on to item eight point O, items removed from consent, there were none. Item nine point O, reports to council, and the first item is the city manager's update report.
Great. Thank you, so I do have short PowerPoint, but I do wanna echo. Kind of like the sentiment that was shared by the council earlier today where we talked about the safety improvements across the city. The Public Works Department and team has done an incredible job in just really adding. A ton of features that make our streets safer from new flashing crosswalks and flashing beacons and restriping, a lot of restriping. I, I was in some of the stops of the National Night Out, and, and it was just, I was really pleased to, to hear. Residents really recognizing that they see that effort, so it's, it's been. A lot of streets that have been touched with the safety improvements, so that is great to see, can you click a couple of slides, so that's that. Second, I wanna highlight and invite the community to stop by, you, you all talked about visiting our sister cities. We actually just completed this summer a new display that actually honors and really showcase gives and mementas that we have received from. International sister cities, and just really highlighting the bond and the friendship, cultural exchange. That connects Watamol to communities around the world that the council has decided to. Kind of adopt as a sister city, so it's a beautiful display, and I hope the community will enjoy, enjoy it for years to come. I also wanted to make sure to share with the council and the community our, the good work that our crews are doing. And really assisting with regional efforts regarding to fire protection in our state. One of our company's engines went to assist at Give for Fire in San Luis Obispo. And our crew spent a few days away from home, but has returned safely, and, and we just wanted to really appreciate. Their good work and support to, to our neighboring county. Also related to fire, I, I do want to share with the council that we have been really working hard on our recruitment efforts. So if anybody knows a person that wants to be a firefighter, Watamol is hiring, we wanna hire. More firefighters, and we, our recruitment is open, our next academy starts September twenty-nine. It's eighteen-week-long training, and it's just, just a great way of serving our community, so that's a great job opportunity to consider. Fire in the sky, it must be on a theme of fire, but this one was talked about earlier today, just really wanna invite our community. To join us to the return of fireworks this year, I believe that was a request of the council for a couple of years now, and, and it's back. And. Last year, Mayor Orozco and I had the honor, and I think Director Calabacuip too, we enjoy being, can you just go next, not, no video. It's, we were judges at the first salsa and salsa, and this is the second annual, so if you wanna know who has the best green or red salsa in town. The youth center hosts a fantastic event, this one is scheduled for Friday, September twelfth, from one, one-thirty to six P M. And it's not just salsa that we can eat, but it's also salsa that we can dance, so just make sure you mark your calendar and, and be part of that. And just going on, on October eighteen, ooh, that's a big spacing, two, two to six P M, we have. Our ceremony, dancing, dinner and dancing for our senior prom, so that will be another event to look forward to. September's coming up, and in September is National Preparedness Month, so we can never predict when the next. Emergency will occur in our community, we just wanna make sure that people are prepared, and this is a good time to kind of create that awareness. I invite our community to visit our watamol.gov website. It has ideas about how to make your plan, how to build an emergency kit, really understanding terminology for safety, and staying connected. With alert channels that really help you and your family to stay safe, so please take a moment to look at that. And it was summer, but we continue to be on the move, Mayor, Mayor Orozco and I had the opportunity. I think I have an echo, or do I, talking in my head? No. We visited Ace Hardware. We actually visited the store in the Eastlake Shopping Center, but there are three fabulous A stores around town. All owned by Manny Rodriguez, who welcome us, and if you can just play that video, that'd be great. We continue to really enjoy our visits to, to local businesses, to learn what they do, and the strength of our local business community is always a pleasant surprise. When we're doing these visits. So.
And if I may add, I think we've also have been receiving lots of positive feedback on the service that the city has been providing businesses. In, in terms of answering their questions and just providing support, so that has definitely been a highlight as we visited different sites.
Yes.
So they, they do have three, three locations around town, so find the one that is most convenient and visit Ace Hardware. And. You know, he's not here in the room so we can roast him, but we do want to. Just really wish Chief Zamora, who will be retiring from service in this community from many years. Jorge is a very unique story. Jorge is a very unique story as he has served the Wattemo community since he was a cadet and ending up his career this upcoming Friday as our Wattemo Police Chief. So we want to wish him well in retirement. And yeah, but he's not here, so that's not going to say more than that. And that concludes my report. If the council has any questions for me, it was a busy summer. Okay. Seeing that there's none, we'll move on to item 9.0. Oral report on Flock safety license plate readers by Police Captain Thol and Kristen Semecoid.
Yeah, they're not here because, no, it's going to be Captain Thol and Assistant Chief Rodriguez.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager and staff. My name is Donnie Thol. I am a captain with the Wattemo Police Department. And seated to my left tonight is not Kristen, it's Assistant Chief David Rodriguez. We are here tonight to report on Flock safety automated license plate readers. Recently, with staffing shortages in the law enforcement profession, law enforcement agencies have turned to technology to help them maximize their efficiency. An interesting fact would be that the Flock system has utilized these cameras by 92% of the law enforcement agencies in the state of California. It's an important tool because it helps us collaborate with agencies across the state. And we have had a successful program here since 2023. We have, currently have 20 cameras that we utilize and over the last six months, they have been used 98 times to help us with our investigations. Increasing the number of cameras would help establish a more effective program in Wattemo. And what we would like to do, the cameras in initial rollout were strategically placed around the city. But what we would like to do is really focus on the ingress and egress. So that if we're looking for a vehicle and it left the city or a vehicle that committed a crime or was related to a crime in another city came into our city, that we'll be able to locate them quicker and bring, and arrest a person and bring them to justice faster. The Flock safety program is, it provides our department with indiscriminate evidence from fixed locations. One of the unique things with utilizing Flock is it doesn't require anyone from the city to do the installation or maintenance. Once we start to begin the contract with them, they come and do the installation and maintenance for the cameras. So if we have any issues, we just report back to them and they will send somebody out. And I've had to do that a couple of times and their response has been very quick and they've been great to work with. It's infrastructure free, it's cloud based, it provides 24/7 coverage and real time alerts. So if a vehicle that was wanted drove into the city, the officers would be alerted by their in-car cameras and it can also be linked up to their work cell phones. It is not facial recognition, there is no speed tracking, and it is not used for immigration purposes. Since we began using Flock, we already have privacy measures that are, have already been in place. The data that is captured by the cameras is owned by the Wattemo Police Department. Private Flock customers, so just so there's a better understanding, homeowners associations can go out and purchase the Flock cameras on their own. Home Depot in the city of Wattemo has done so. They cannot see our cameras, but they can share with us, which they do. The Flock information automatically deletes after 30 days, so long as we didn't use it for an investigation and we're hanging on to that information. We decide who we want to share it with. And currently, we're bound by local laws and state laws that we cannot share with any agencies outside the state of California. And we also cannot share for immigration purposes or anything like that. All the data is stored with end-to-end data encryption. And as soon as we went online with Flock, we activated the transparency portal, which is accessible from the PD's website. It's important to note that anytime that we are going to utilize Flock for investigative purposes for a search, that anytime it's used, it's traceable. So we can do an audit anytime. And Flock actually encourages all the agencies to implement regular audits. Flock has implemented new product features because the immigration concerns have been a hot topic with Flock. It's important to note that whenever an officer logs in to use Flock, before they do a search, it reminds them that they cannot be using it for immigration purposes. Anytime that the LPRs or Flock is going to be used, it has to be for official business. All of our officers have been trained on how to use it. And for onboarding officers, they are also trained during their field training program. We conduct regular audits. And this is all tracked by CAD incident detail reports and/or case numbers. To expand on that, anytime an officer is going to use this, you can't just go in and randomly say, oh, I'm going to go and look at the Assistant Chief's plate and see where he's been today. There has to be a reason and with that has to be associated a case number and/or the CAD detail record. All of that is captured and it's held within the system and when we do the audits, we're able to see that. I would now like to speak on just a couple of the success stories so you can have a better understanding of how important this tool is. When we first rolled out the Flock cameras in 2023, there was an attempted murder in Monterey County over in Paharo. This was a stabbing suspect and during that investigation, they knew that the suspect's vehicle plate had been provided to police. And one of our young proactive officers took it upon himself to enter that plate into the Flock system in a hot list, which was created so that we would know if that vehicle came into the city. That vehicle did come into the city and the Flock was captured with the camera that's at Main and Front Street. When the officer was alerted to that, he spotted the vehicle and a car stop was made. This ended up in a situation where this person, the suspect, was identified. He was there armed with a knife and he actually stabbed our police canine. He was arrested and brought to justice. In a case earlier this year, and I'm going to be very vague on some of this because it's still ongoing investigation. So I can set this up around nine o'clock in the evening earlier this year in another area in the county. There was a, police responded to a fight with guns involved. About nine minutes later, at another location, they responded to a second. At 9:42, a third shots fired. And at 10:08, finally here in the city of Wattemo, we responded to a shots fired call. A Wattemo police detective searched Flock and developed a lead that ultimately led to the license plate of a suspect vehicle that was involved in this case, which later led to enough evidence for a search warrant for some cellphone data. That investigation led to the arrest of a suspect and located the suspect vehicle. I would also like to point out that even before we had our own Flock cameras, we had other allied agencies that assisted us with a couple of our murder investigations that were also successful. And that was two to three years before we started using our own. What I'd like to point out again is, you know, the crime and suspects fleeing from the city, it's not like if somebody committed a crime here and they leave Wattemo and drive into Paharo. This stuff is crossing city and county lines. And what we want to do is catch our suspects quickly. An example I would use is if somebody was to steal a car, many times before we had this type of technology, it may be three or four days later and we would recover a badly burned or vandalized car that's up on blocks, missing its wheels, the engine's gone. Well, now, because so many agencies surrounding us are utilizing this technology, we're able to find these vehicles much quicker and it's before they're damaged and we're also able to bring the suspect to justice. We are committed to transparency and accountability and I would like for you to know that just this year I have conducted two audits with the Flock system and I have found zero misuse of the system. That's all I have, yeah, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you, I just wanted to making sure. Do you have any questions from council members? Vice Mayor?
So I just wanted to clarify, pursuant to California law, for example, if Salinas PD or Santa Cruz County Sheriff had an investigation that also involved our cameras, you gave a stolen vehicle example, right? A vehicle stolen out of Salinas, they think it's come to Wattemo. They or you might be permitted, that would be a permitted use to look at the Flock data to see if that vehicle is in Wattemo. Is that an accurate quick summary?
Yes.
And, but if the feds, if any federal law enforcement agency, particularly ICE, came in and said, hey, we want to use your data, what would you say?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, if I may.
Sure.
I just want to say thank you, Captain Thol, for the presentation and for explaining the ins and outs and how this system works. And even more, thank you, Mayor Protim Salsido for, long story short, simplifying it. Thank you very much.
It's the first time I've been called brief.
So I'm not sure we have any members of the public who wish to address council on this item, but if there is, please come to the podium.
Yeah, my name's Antonio Rivas. The only concern that I have is that in regards to immigration and ICE, you say, well, I would like to see it in writing to be put so that we'll be able to be good. Because mostly say, you know, it's orally, they say you not report that to the Immigration Department, but I will feel more comfortable that it's written into that policy, ICE and immigration. That's all.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Yes, it's actually already in our policy. And it states the government code, California Values Act. So it's well defined and the officers are well aware of that.
Thank you.
Hi, yeah, my name's Tyler. I just had a quick question for the police captain. I am curious if the, so I understand that the department can't share per California law with federal agencies, but I have heard of individual officers kind of being able to either share an investigation, for instance, with a federal officer on a particular case and somehow data can get transferred that way. I guess I wanted to kind of understand whether or not the sanction on departments per California law also includes individual officers using this technology and potentially sharing it with a colleague in INS or FBI or something like that.
So again, those officers working at the allied agencies that this data is shared with, if they were to share it, they're not supposed to do that. Again, we're governed by the California Values Act and that specific agency's policy as well. So they could be held accountable if that was to happen.
Thank you. And then just for a reminder to the public, whenever you're at the podium, you're addressing the council. And then if the council wants to address your question, then we can provide staff direction. So that's just a technicality. Is there anyone else? Public, okay. All right, so there's no real vote, but the reason why I brought this item forward was just to ensure that we are addressing concerns that we're hearing now in the community. There's a lot of fear out there and the purpose of this presentation was to reiterate the fact that we're not sharing data with ICE. And the goal of the police department is to keep our community safe. So with that, we'll move on to item 10.0, public hearings, ordinances and appeals. Item 10.8, amendments to Chapter 1446 Affordable Housing Ordinance within Title 14 of Wattemo Municipal Code. And the staff report will be provided by Housing Manager Landa Berry. Landa Berry, I'm sorry.
Yay. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Carlos Landa Berry, Housing Manager. And I thought I was going to have Leila with me, but it'll be the CDD team, Housing and our director. And so I'll present to the Affordable Housing Ordinance update. By way of background, the ordinance was initially adopted in 1991, but it was, it went through a major revision in 2001 to reflect income data. The ordinance, as you may remember, requires that 15 to 20% of units in new residential projects in the city, projects that more than seven units, be affordable to Wattemo residents. It also sets Wattemo income limit and it sets an in lieu fee. And of course, why do we need to update the ordinance now? There are a couple of things. It started last year when we brought the income limits to the city council and some questions came up about the prevailing interest rate and how to update the ordinance to do a language cleanup, as we would call it. And then we also have a new housing element that was certified at the end of the year. So in order to comply with the housing element and goals and policies, current state laws, and also to improve clarity and to simplify compliance and to strengthen and have more transparency and clarity, both for our users, our residents, but also for developers. So the key updates in the ordinance, number one, I mentioned the language cleanup. There's a lot of modifications that that we did some cleanup, especially with definitions and just ending terms that we don't use anymore. For example, eliminating or deleting the use of the redevelopment agency, as that was dissolved. The density bonus section was removed. It is now in a different chapter of the municipal code. Same with the downtown core section because now we have a downtown specific plan adopted. And lastly, the prevailing interest rate is clarified. So for the local preference, it prioritizes the current resident, local workers have priority to either rent or purchase an affordable unit. In doing so, we believe it helps retain community members despite the market condition changes and rising housing cost. But it also ensures or enhances the possibility that employees here can have priority and stay housed here locally. stay housed here locally. For the prevailing interest rate, it initially sets an average 30-year fixed rate from local lenders offering mortgage loans to Watsonville residents. And the recommendation is to have it initially set by the Community Development Director and then the city council having discretion to amend it every, every six months or every year when the income limits are announced by the, by HCD. Now, the interest rate, as we talked about last year, it's critical because it helps set the sales price or the initial purchase price from the developers. And the way we do that, we use a lot of assumptions, but there are a couple of very key terms that are used for that calculation. Number one, we use, or the ordinance uses a bedroom count. In that case, units, so let's, we'll use a three-bedroom unit as an example. A three-bedroom unit, it's priced the same way whether it is a condominium or town home, a single-family home, or a manufactured home. The size or the type of the unit doesn't matter. Then the calculation takes also into account that if we use the same three-bedroom house, the calculation uses a four-bedroom, excuse me, a four-person household. So we use the number of bedrooms plus one to calculate the income limit. And we use the maximum annual household income limit from the Watsonville income limits or the median income for Watsonville to set that price. And so a three-bedroom house, we assume that a four-person family will buy it. And we take the median income for a four-person family to calculate the price. That's one factor. The second factor is based on the mortgage that that family can be able to use to afford that unit. And the monthly household allowance or that mortgage, we use that income limit and the interest rate to calculate how much they can afford. But the interesting thing is that for that mortgage, we only take into account, or the ordinance only takes into account, the principal pay down and the interest. We don't take into account property taxes, insurance, utilities, or HOA dues, as most programs do. And so with that, we're also requesting that, finding that amending the ordinance is not a project under the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. And if it were a project, that it doesn't represent a significant environmental impact. The amendments or the updates are consistent with our general plan. By expanding and protecting housing for all groups and income levels, it'll help us to meet our regional housing needs. And it helps reduce governmental barriers, or as we would say, it would streamline the process to create more housing. The amendments were presented to the Planning Commission at their regularly scheduled meeting on June 3rd. And they unanimously recommended that the city council adopt the updated ordinance and affirm the SEQA exception. That will end my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, do we have any technical questions from council? Councilmember Dutra?
Thank you, thank you, Carlos, for all your hard work. I know that you, every year, you bring us the numbers and show us what the forecast is going to look like and we appreciate the hard work you put into it. How is it going to be different than last year? Is there other rates going down? I would assume.
So rates, thank you, thank you for that question. Rates are going down, but they're not as, they're not going down as quickly as we were expecting. They're still somewhere between 6.5, 6.8. Last year, they were between 7, 7.2. Some lenders were still lending at 7.5.
That's high.
We are closing some of our.
That's high.
It is high.
Yeah.
We've had, we're closing some of our affordable, the first affordable housing units at Hillcrest Estates. And we have some units for resale. We just had a family that was able to get in, but the interest rate they got was 7%. And it's based on different factors, but it's still high.
Well, because I'm hearing people, they're getting their rates in the sixes, six and a half or lower, around six and a half, right? So the fact that we're at seven, that's, that's interesting. I thought we were supposed to be competitive, but, you know. So, and these are the rates we're going to be, so they're doing, thank you for bringing Hillcrest up, it's being done in phases, correct? So that last phase of, was based off of the rate that we approved last year.
Correct.
The next phase, when is it supposed to be finished?
I'll pass it on to my planning team.
So the initial stage of development is being wrapped up. Final certificate of occupancies are being requested and signed off by the various departments. They've put in so far, the next round of development for stage two. Once those permits are ready to be issued, they'll start construction. Timeframe for completing all of the onsite work as well as the next stage of development, I don't have the exact figure, but it's, I would imagine going to be, well, I don't have the exact figure, we'd have to look at their project schedule, but into next year.
So whatever the rates we're setting today, these will be affecting the next phase?
Not, not quite. We're not, you're not adopting an interest rate today.
Or, but the next rate that you, we are going to adopt will be affecting the next phase?
Correct. So we will, yeah, so we will come back to you with the average interest rates as we get close to that second phase, so that it more accurately reflects the current market and the interest rates at that time.
I feel like time flies, time blends in with, I don't know if it's because I'm getting older or what, but I feel like we just did this. So the fact that we're now talking about it again, that's why I'm kind of confused. Like, I feel like we just approved all of this just months ago, but it seems like, it seems like we're rounding up another, close to another year. Okay, so well, I look forward to that and thank you again for doing all this hard work.
Any other questions from council?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Yes, hi Carlos, thank you for your presentation. It's always wonderful to hear from you. I have a specific question regarding how does the city prioritize current residents?
Thank you for the question. It is an excellent question. So what we do now is the ordinance says that rental units have to be marketed to local residents. And then we add that language to our affordable housing agreements. And we work with the developers, but the city staff, the Housing Division staff has to work so that we do the outreach and marketing to local residents. That way we have more of our local residents getting our units. But we also have a great interest from people from outside the city, from outside of the county and from outside the state. So having the local preference codified in the ordinance makes our work a lot easier because now it's the law. And people, either renters or purchasers, have to live or work in the city or receive municipal services to have priority. And after a certain period of time, if there is no interest from the local residents, then we can go outside the city limits or the region.
Okay, so that leads me into my next question, and I think this might be more in our city attorney's wheelhouse. You know, I understand that we have an ordinance here in the city and that is our law, but state and federal laws precede us. And, you know, there's the Fair Housing Act. And I'm just curious how the city navigates its way around discriminatory actions denying housing to people.
Are you asking in terms, it sounds like you're asking in terms of the local preference provision?
Correct.
Yeah, so this ordinance codifying your local preference policy into an ordinance is actually specifically permitted by state law. I think it's SB 649? I always get that wrong, 649. It was recently adopted and it actually allows agencies to codify local preference provisions. And it gives the agencies a layer of defense. It also, it also adds certain reporting requirements that the city will also adhere to about how it applies its local preference provision. So the fact that the city is codifying it by ordinance is specifically supported by state law. And Carlos worked with our office to make sure that this ordinance is compliant with that law.
Okay, wonderful. Would anybody mind sending me a copy of that Senate bill so I could look into that? And thank you for that explanation, because that was a major concern of mine, because, you know, discriminatory acts by the city, that's not a good thing. So I'm glad that there is a Senate bill out there that covers that.
Sure, I'll send it to you now.
Okay, thank you. And that's all, thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing that there's no additional questions from council, we will now open it up to the public. Do we have any members of the public who wish to address council on this item? All right, seeing that there's none, I'll bring it back to council for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve for the first reading of title only, waiving the full reading of the text and ordinance, amending multiple chapters within Title 14 of the Watsonville Municipal Code related to the implementation of programs within the six cycle. Do you continue reading the whole thing or you got it?
I'll second that, but I won't repeat it.
We're okay, thank you.
Okay. And before I call the vote, I just want to kind of highlight a couple of things that I appreciated with these updates, which I think some council members, I'm not sure if the entire council, I don't quite recall the entire conversation, but I appreciate that the ordinance prioritizes our residents by reserving the first 30 days for availability for local households, right? I also value the requirement that the owner or the developer establish and maintain a local office, employ someone fluent in both English and Spanish, and provide materials in both languages. And most importantly, this is Watsonville Affordable Housing Ordinance. It was created with our community in mind and we need to make sure that programs offered through the city stay rooted here, supporting local families, local workers, and local needs. So I just want to give a big thank you to staff. I know you've been working on this for quite some time and I'm finally happy that it's finally here and that we're codifying local preference. That's a big deal to me. So with that, can we have a roll call, please?
Good comment as well, quick. Just want to say, I want to agree with the mayor on that. I, you know, we have so many projects that do come into Watsonville that do not prioritize people that live here in the community. So when we actually get the opportunity to do this, I think it's a great, it's a great idea as well.
Yeah, roll call, please.
There's a motion by councilmember Dutra, seconded by councilmember Montesino, to amend the Chapter 14, Title 14, Chapter 46 of the Affordable Housing Ordinance within Title 14 zoning of the Watsonville Municipal Code. I will now take role. Park?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker? Quiros Carter?
Aye.
Salcedo?
Aye.
And Orozco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. And moving on to item 10. B, Six-Cycle Housing Element Implementation, and the staff report You'll bear with me for a moment, as you can see, we're just experiencing technical difficulties all around today.
In the meantime, I could go ahead and introduce, I am Assistant Community Development Director Matt Orbach, joined tonight by Assistant Community Development Director Justin Meek,
What if you show it? Ali, what if you show it from the preview? Wait, it's coming out here.
Yeah, the thing, it's my, it's my screen is not allowing me to control it, so it comes up, but then you guys are just not, I'm not able to control it in a way that you guys can.
There you go.
You can see it, it's just not up on the projector. Let me see if I can get that going for you.
We can, we can see it on that screen. On the TV.
I don't, I don't see it.
I can, I can run it from my laptop, I think it's working out with me.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so if you remember in October of last year, we adopted the six-cycle housing element. Right around the same time the city had issued an RFP for proposals for doing housing element implementation for that six-cycle housing element. We got a great pool of consultants, out of which we chose Raimi &amp; Associates. We've had great experience working with them on the downtown Watsonville specific plan and other projects. So shortly after the housing element was adopted, we hit the ground running, working on the implementation phase. So we've been working diligently on that with them for, you know, through the winter and into the spring. We're subjected to a few delays from the California Department of Housing and Community Development not getting back to us in a timely manner. But despite the delays, we have been able to take a crack at implementing the first round of programs identified in the six-cycle housing element that have the closest due dates in December of 2025 and early 2026. And tonight, as I mentioned, we have Simran Malhotra from Raimi &amp; Associates, who will be presenting that first round of implementation measures.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Mayor Orozco, members of the city council. Simran Malhotra, Principal with Raimi &amp; Associates. I'm very pleased to be here today. We have a short presentation for you describing the changes we are recommending for the, in the municipal code and to the downtown Watsonville specific plan in order to implement the programs in the housing element, the six-cycle housing element that was adopted last year. So there are eight programs in the housing element that are listed on the screen. I won't read them all because I'll go over these on the, on subsequent slides, that the changes to the municipal code are being made in order to implement these programs. There are two changes to the Watsonville, downtown Watsonville specific plan as well. Now, in a little bit more detail, one of the programs, C7 in the housing element, was related to transitional housing, which is temporary housing provided for individuals or families who have been subjected to the effects of economic dislocation or emotional or mental problems or substance abuse. Transitional housing is meant to be a bridge between homelessness and a permanent housing. And per state law, transitional housing needs to be allowed in all zones where housing is allowed. So as such, we have added transitional housing to all the use tables in Chapter 1416 in the various district regulations. Similarly, another program deals with supportive housing, which is permanent housing for similar individuals. And again, the housing element had a program which recommended And again, the housing element had a program which recommended that supportive housing was added as a use in all residential zoning districts with the same restrictions as other residential dwellings of the same type in that zone. So as such, we have added that in the various use tables in Chapter 1416 as well. The density bonus is currently covered under Chapter 1447. And as you may know, the state regularly updates the provision of the state density bonus law every year. So it becomes challenging for local jurisdictions to constantly be updating their municipal code to remain in compliance with state law. So the approach we have taken here is to essentially just refer to state law to the various government code sections, which are roughly Government Code Section 65915 to 918, et cetera, except in the areas where the city already exceeds the state's minimum requirements. So as an example, there's a couple of places where the city is less restrictive. The definition of daycare in, in the city's municipal code included both child and adult daycare facilities, while the state law only required or defines daycare as child daycare. So that's, we wanted to maintain that, that distinction and less restrictive provision in the, in the city's municipal code. And the city also allows in lieu fees instead of the provision of actual housing and that provision is continued as well. One other change that was recommended, and this was to match state law, was to increase the minimum period of deed restriction for affordability. The code currently says 40 years and it was increased to 55 years to match state law. What we also did was create a user-friendly handout for developers, staff, and other interested parties to be able to understand the provision of the state density bonus law. If you've ever looked at the state code, it's very confusing with multiple cross-rim references to a variety of sections and hard to understand. So instead, we have created, it's a seven or eight-page handout, which makes it very easy to understand what the density bonuses are, what level of affordability you need to provide, and what the process you need to go through to be able to avail yourself of the provisions of, of the state density bonus law. Similarly, accessory, in accessory dwelling units, which are in Chapter 1423 of the Watsonville Municipal Code, these, this ordinance is also like the density bonus law amended, or the provisions in the state law are amended periodically, almost on an annual basis. And it is hard for cities to stay up to date with, with the provisions of state law. And so the approach we've taken here is, is the same as with density bonus law, created a handout, which makes it very easy. It's well, it's illustrated graphically and is easy to understand for anyone interested in building an ADU. And the municipal code itself is recommended for being amended to essentially refer back to state law, except where the city is providing additional incentives or exceeding the minimum requirements that the state requires you to. And so the couple of places where we are exceeding the state minimums are for large lots, which are 12,000 square feet or bigger. And the state says you have to allow at least one unit. And the city's code currently allows two units, two ADUs on those lots. The city also allows for larger ADUs to be built, up to 12,000 square feet in size, while the state law only requires cities to allow up to 1,000 square feet units. Parking is an issue in, in the city of Watsonville. So as such, there's an incentive being provided for, for providing parking for ADUs, which is not required by state law. We have allowed for additional height so that you, if onsite parking is provided. We've also allowed for stacked ADUs, which means ADU either on top of a garage or a two-story ADU on, on larger lots if parking is provided onsite. The city also needed to provide provisions for reasonable accommodation procedures and provide information regarding that to the public. There's a handout created, it's in your packet. And that's addressed in a new Chapter 1411 in the municipal code. An example might be for reasonable, reasonable accommodation was related to someone with a disability. So for example, if you need a ramp in your front yard, which may not be permitted otherwise, you're allowed to build that ramp to, to be able to access your, your home. D6, this program is amending the definition of family to align with state law. It essentially changes the definition to include unrelated individuals. And so that definition is being amended as a part of this, this effort. Program D9 is related to residential care facilities for seven or more residents. And the city is now required to permit these through administrative review and to remove any subjective approval findings that might affect approval certainty. And that's been modified in Chapter 1416. Now, projects which are residential care facilities would be approved with the AUP. And then the last program is related to farm worker and workforce housing. This is, it's, the municipal code is being updated to be in compliance with the Employee Housing Act. And as such, it's been added to the various use tables in Chapter 1416. Now switching gears to the changes to the downtown Watsonville specific plan. One of the requirements in, or the programs in the housing element was related to amend the requirements for residential uses. And the program said to require 50% residential use in the downtown central core area. Several of the housing element sites are located within this part of the downtown, of downtown. So that modification has been made to Table 6-6-3. One other program in the housing element was related to amending the height limits for the downtown neighborhood and downtown industrial zoning districts, changing the height from four to six stories for those two zones and changing the height for the downtown core from six to eight stories. As we did our analysis and looked at test, we did some test fits to see what projects might look like or what height you would need to build a typical project. And in these zones, we established that a height increase was not needed and we were able to, we were able to accommodate a typical housing project within the height limits that are already in the, in the downtown specific plan. So as such, no changes recommended. While we were doing these site tests, we realized that there were a few minor changes and clarifications we could make to the downtown specific plan design standards that would help with development feasibility. And so some of those changes are being recommended as a part of, of this, this work we are presenting in front of you today. The map you see on your screen is the, the downtown regulating plan or zoning map. There are a few cleanup items on this map, which help with the development feasibility issue I just mentioned. There's also a minor change related to the transit center redevelopment proposal that, that has been approved by, by the, by the city. And we've made some changes to some of the overlays within, within the, within downtown. The standard that we modified primarily related to step backs from adjacent properties, especially if they were adjacent to a single family. And the changes that we have made now have a dual step back situation. So the first few fee, first couple, depending on whether there's a street or alley between a parcel and the adjacent parcel, the fourth floor would be set back 12 feet. And if there's a fifth and sixth floor, there would be an additional 12-foot setback. And if they were immediately adjacent to each other, the step back would start a foot, a floor lower. So there's more of a step back and more protection for the neighboring property. And then the fifth and sixth floor, if it's provided, would be 25 feet setback. So there's again, more of a setback in protection for those single-family properties. And there were a couple of other minor clarifications related to how the facade, which facades the requirements applied to. We presented the, these recommendations to the Planning Commission in a study session in May and they took action in, in a meeting in June where they recommended that, that the City Council adopt an ordinance, adopting zoning code text amendments to various chapters in the municipal code, as well as make changes, adopt the changes to the downtown Watsonville specific plan. And that brings me to the end of our presentation. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any technical questions from council? Councilmember Dutra?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions. In regard to the transitional housing or supportive housing that you're talking about on that slide, is that including into, in the neighborhoods? Could we go back to that slide, please? Just a second. Okay. Adopted zoning ordinance amendment to permit transitional housing in all residential zoning districts under the same restrictions as other residential dwellings of the same type in that, in the same zone. So is this opening up for, throughout the entire city, allowing for transitional housing to be allowed in every neighborhood?
Yes. It, the, the state law says you have to allow transitional housing in every zone that allows multifamily. So transitional housing is, would be allowed, would be allowed in all zones that allow multifamily housing.
Excuse me, could you talk into the microphone? We're having hard trouble hearing you up here.
Sorry.
Oh, way better, yeah, thank you. So I, I guess my, you know, when, when you're saying transitional, I think the, a person's mind automatically goes to someone who's homeless. That's what you would think, right? But in Salinas, they just had an ischional with transitional housing that went into a neighborhood for ex-prisoners. So transitional housing could mean really a lot of things, correct? So I, I don't know, I just find it kind of concerning that we're allowing a definition that's so vague and open to go into neighborhoods automatically without any, you know, oversight or, you know, the opportunity to, for, for residents to, you know, have a say on, on, on whether or not they want that sort of transitional housing in their neighborhood.
So the definition of housing, for transitional housing that's now in, being proposed for the municipal code is per state law. The city has very little leeway in changing that. And that's.
So basically, we're just, we're just adding in state definitions. I mean, I think, I think that when you leave something really vague, it could cause a lot of problems later on if it's not, you know, detailed out in our, in our codes. So, you know, I just worry that transitional housing will mean a lot of things.
I, I share your, your concern. We are following what state law is requiring us to, requiring the city to, to do.
And I know when I was, as a city council member in District 4, there are houses in some of those neighborhoods that are drug rehab houses. And I know that, you know, neighbors were always like, they're smoking, they're leaving their cigarette buds outside, da-da-da. So I, are there, how do you, how are you able to address, you know, issues with transitional homes in these neighborhoods if a problem comes up? Because right now, this is just changing it free for all, you know? But there's no recourse.
I'll defer to city staff to answer, answer that, I think.
I'm sorry, I have to ask the hard questions, you know what I'm saying? Like, I just feel like, because what's going to happen is something, I just been, I've been watching the thing in Salinas. So I was like, okay, this is interesting. And now we're talking about this and, you know, someone's going to blame us for opening it up, you know, into our neighborhoods. And to me, that's concerning, you know? I should be, we should be very transparent on what, what we're opening our communities up to.
Yeah, as Simran mentioned, these are, these are checkbox items from HCD that we're required to do. They're included in our housing element program, so really don't have a say in it. But in terms of how they would be policed afterwards, you know, it would be upon our code enforcement and, you know, the police nuisance procedures to regulate, you know, activities on the property. So that's specifically, to answer your question, that's how you would regulate it.
Okay, well, I just, I just think that it's, sometimes, you know, living in California, we, we open ourselves up to bigger issues. And this could be a bigger issue by, you know, just creating transitional housing vaguely. Okay, and then my other, my other question is, on the downtown specific plan, it said 50%, it has to be residential, is that like the ground floor?
No, for the entire building.
So 50% residential and then the other 50%?
Could be commercial.
Okay.
I mean, it's, the reality of it is a multi-story building in downtown would at the most have a ground floor, commercial, and the rest of it would be residential if it was mixed-use. So it would be higher than 50% anyway. But this was a HCD requirement that.
So every building that you build now has to, can only be the max 50% business?
No, if it is.
So like, let's say if they put just one floor of, of housing in there, then, and they would have to meet the requirements. It would, if they even wanted to do one floor, they would have to at least make it 50% of the entire building. So they can't just be like, okay, we're going to create a, I don't want to, just, you know, X business, big business. Because I think we want to build a downtown where maybe there's going to be an anchor one day. And maybe they want to do a floor of housing for their employees, I don't know. But this is, this is making them say, okay, if you have three floors of business, you're going to have to at least have at least three floors of housing.
If it's a mixed-use development, you, you can still have 100% commercial, 100% office where it's allowed. But if it's a mixed-use development, meaning a combination of residential with something else, then yeah.
Right, if they do at least one floor of housing and there are three floors of commercial, they would at least have to do three floors of housing.
That is correct. And if I may, just if I may for a moment.
And if I may, just if I may for a moment, the, what we're seeing a lot these days is mixed-use developments where you have a commercial ground floor and then housing above. In that scenario, it's going to be more than 50%. You're hypothetical, if it was an office complex, they wanted to have half, if you want to have a significant portion of office, that would also have to have at least 50%. We're not seeing market conditions of that type of development. But this is, again, one of those instances where HCD required that for any mixed-use zone that involved a mixed-use type development, that at least half were devoted to residential.
That's, I mean, I didn't know this until right today. I mean, until we, you know, read this and then learned about it, that you, you don't really control how much, you, you have to have at least 50%. So you can't come in with a business and say, I'm only going to do, I'm going to do 25% housing for my staff or for employees. You can't do that. It's got to be 50%.
Yeah. And again, this is for a mixed-use housing project. So again, if it was 100% commercial office, usually if you have something of that type, you're only going to propose office, but not in a six-story type building.
Okay. And then my final question is, there was the question, there was the slide about the setbacks? And it's like after was, I think it was four, four floors, then it's so many feet, and then after so many other feet, so many feet. What happens if the buildings are together? Does that setback, does it, does it go away?
If the buildings are butting each other, then you don't need to have the setback. This, this only applies, if I can share the map...
If you tear down a building, you can build it back up next to each other?
So that scenario only applies where you see the hatch. So it only applies along the edges of the, of downtown.
And just to clarify, the intent here is to step down to adjoining neighborhoods that are at lower heights compared to what's allowed in the mixed-use neighborhood zone and downtown core, which are four to six stories. And so as you sort of think of like a transect or transition down to better match existing development beyond the boundary.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I guess my concern is that, you know, the voters restricted us in the last election. We can't grow out, right? We have to grow within our, within our city limits. And so I just want to make sure that when we are building a downtown, sorry, I'm like looking at you, but I don't know who to look at. When we are building our downtown up, that we're gaining as much housing as possible in that area, because we don't have a lot of space to be growing outside. And if the voters, they, they said, we, you, they do not want to go beyond the urban limit line. So we have to be able to maximize with what we have. So I just want to make sure that, like, you know, how that was working, because if they are butting up against each other, it didn't make sense to me that there would have to be a setback, so.
We appreciate the, the question and comment. No, and that's exactly what we're intending to accommodate. The only thing is, just to get it, those adjacencies with smaller scale developments nearby, to step it down. But to your question, that you still can, as shown in those mockups, provide four and six-story developments at 85 to 125 units per acre. That's feasible.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thanks, Justin. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
So just for clarification, are all of the amendments that we're discussing right now because of state law? Or are some of the amendments staff recommendations?
All the, all the amendments to the municipal code are based on state law and HCD's requirements which were adopted as a part of the housing element. There are a few cleanup items in the downtown Watsonville specific plan that are staff recommendations.
Okay. So, you know, I, to echo Councilmember Dutra, I kind of had, you know, same issues with the same, you know, points here. The transitional housing, I, I wanted a little bit of clarification on that. So are we talking about existing units or new build?
Future units.
Future units.
Projects.
So what about, what, what about existing units? Say, you know, there's a residential home, and somebody wants to turn it into residential care home. The, is there, I mean, does that apply to them? Or are there no restrictions with the city? Because I mean, that, that would be a licensed facility. So I mean, like, does that have any sort of a, or like Councilmember Dutra was talking about, the transitional home for the prisoners? I think that was an existing home. So, I mean, does this have any bearing on that? It's just for new build?
Well, that's a change in use. So this requirement, or the city would have to allow, allow that, that change of use on that property. So it's not necessarily a new, new construction. It's a new use, whether it's, you know, a reuse of an existing building or, or new construction.
Okay. And then in regards to D eight, Table six three, the 50% of square footage, that, and that's only for the central core, like central corridor, that, that only applies to a new build that is specifically built to be mixed use, correct?
Correct.
That takes care of that one. And thank you for answering the question about the setbacks for the areas in the hatched part of the map. Because, you know, the way I imagine it is, you know, all these buildings having step backs, that just makes for, you know, funny-looking buildings and a not very attractive downtown.
Right.
So, so if an existing building is, God forbid, like falls in a fire or something like that, and it was a mixed use, but it did not meet the requirement of the 50/50 before it fell, when it's rebuilt, it must meet that 50/50 requirement? Even though you're replacing something that was existing?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I think this would fall under legal nonconforming and your rights to be able to rebuild under what was there before, provided that it's, you know, the damage of it's up to a certain percentage.
Okay. So as long as you're, so it would be legal nonconforming as long as you're rebuilding to the same specification? And just kind of going on as per usual? So, okay. And, and we, we know that for a fact, or we're just assuming?
I think it would be, I mean, I, I don't think we are assuming. I think that's how it would be, it should be interpreted.
Okay. Can we do a little bit more research on that, just to make sure? Because I, I just don't want someone getting into a pickle and, you know, ending up in that sort of a situation. And then, you know, it's, it's just an absolute overreach of government, you know, to tell somebody that, you know, they cannot rebuild their property the way that it was once before, you know?
Yes, we can look into that.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmember Salsido?
Could you go back to the transitional housing slide? So that's Casa Azul in Santa Cruz, right? Right?
I'm, I'm not totally sure.
It's the one on Coral Street. I don't know. It's the name.
It's called Casa Azul. It's notorious for fentanyl, methamphetamine, and cocaine sales and distribution. I am a mom of a two-and-a-half-year-old and a six-month-old. I don't want to live next to that in my single-family home development. So what if, if this comes, you know, to my area, what if anything could the city do to modify this? What would stop them from coming in next door to where I live? Because extraordinary high crime has happened here. Bad picture, frankly. This is a really high-crime area in Santa Cruz, and this particular area was redeveloped into multiple small apartments, and it is notorious for crime and drug sales and drug use. So how, how can I say to my district, this isn't coming to your single-family home area?
I think what you have to say is that this is state law. And so there are, the state legislature is pumping out housing legislation as quickly as we can implement it. And so this is state law. And so that's what you have to say to your district.
And that would be my question. Is this for, so just to clarify, new builds, like new homes? Or can somebody take an existing home and make Casa Azul next to my house?
Technically...
They can put in transitional housing. But I believe context matters, because there's a lot more that contributes to the issues around this particular example here in the photo. This is not a normal single-family neighborhood. There's, you know, homeless services provided right across the street. There have been encampments all up and down the street for a long period of time. So I, I wouldn't identify this home as an example of, of what a transitional housing facility can do to a neighborhood. I would say this neighborhood is already bad, and it just happened to get a transitional housing facility that was previously a single-family home in a bad neighborhood. So, you know, I, that would be my response to this particular example. In terms of the transitional housing and what City Attorney Zutler mentioned, you know, the failure to include this definition would put us at risk of decertification for our housing elements. So that's, that's where we find ourselves, is that are we willing to take that risk when this is a mandate from the state?
And then earlier, it was multifamily home residential. I heard the term multifamily, and then it was all residential. Are we saying that the, the actual language is all residential? I thought I heard somebody mention multifamily area, but it's all, you're, to clarify, it's all residential?
I'm confirming that.
I believe she was correct when she said multifamily, because it's not in the changes for the proposed, for the single-family residential zoning district, so.
Okay. So that's helpful. So this slide is slightly inaccurate. So it would be for multifamily-zoned areas? So if you have single-family home locations that were zoned for single-family home, something like this could not come in?
Except the R1P evidently, the planned residential district. So it's like a planned development. That is one where it was included, but not in just basic R1, single-family, which is the majority of what we have in our city in terms of R1.
Okay. So where, can you just clarify? I, I'm sorry to belabor this point. Where are multi-use locations generally?
So I'm looking at the table. So this would be allowed in commercial neighborhood, commercial thoroughfare, downtown... And... And R3.
Yeah. That's correct. All right. I appreciate that clarification. It does make me feel a lot more, a lot easier about, like, I don't want this next door, but there are certainly places where we can accommodate this reasonably in our community. And I just don't think single-family residential spaces are really meant for something like this. Is that, are we sure that that is what we're actually passing tonight? Okay. Thank you.
That's what I was verifying. I was, I was going into Exhibit A to the ordinance, which is the proposed changes in the red line and underline, strike through and underline. And that's where it's only included in the RM2, RM3, and the districts that Simone mentioned.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions from council? All right, seeing those are none, now I'll open it up to the public. Do we have any members of the public who wish to address council on this item?
My name is Orelle Gonzalez from District Two. On this, just a question real quick on this transitional housing, not to beat it to death, but transitional housing also may be a battered woman that needs a new home, may be a homeless family that needs a new home. So that's not bad-marked transitional housing, that all transitional housing is nothing but a drug house, nothing but gangbangers, you know? Transitional housing is a very important part of this community. We have quite a bit of transitional housing, and we need more actually, because we do have a lot of single-family home, families here. And we may have more with this administration coming. So you may be needing more transitional housing within your community. So think about your families and your kids, okay? Not just what the bad end of it, and make it an awful thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing that there's none, I'll bring it back to council for a motion.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just ask one more clarifying question.
Sure.
This is for staff. Is there any sort of a time constraint that we have with these amendments? I mean, does this need to be done right now? Or can some of our questions and concerns be looked into and this be tabled and brought back at our next meeting?
I believe the soonest deadline in the housing element is December 2025, so it's not, you know, knocking at our door, but it is, we need to have it done by the end of the year.
Okay. So this is definitely not something that we need to rush through. I, I, I don't know. I, I kind of feel that maybe we should pump the brakes on this just a little bit. I'm not opposed to a lot of things on here, but there are a couple big-ticket items that we just don't have clarification on. And so I, I am perfectly open to tabling this, but of course, this, you know, the rest of the council, I don't know how you guys feel, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. So I wanted to, I'm glad that you clarified the fact that this slide is wrong, right? So it's not accurate. It's not going into all residential neighborhoods. And I don't think anyone was demonizing transitional, transitional housing. I think there are some questions and concerns that we do have to, we have to bring up. That's our job. We're supposed to be talking about all parts of it. And so, yes, there are homeless individuals, or women in shelters, you know, probably Shelter Service does a great job of having transitional housing in neighborhoods, and a lot of times you can't even tell that they're transitional housing. But we do have to make sure that we're answering all the questions. That's our job as unelected leaders. And there have been issues in other communities with other types of transitional housing that draw concerns from community members, and that's why we're asking these questions. So I'm, I'm glad that this, you guys are sure that this was a typo, and then, you know, I, I have no other concerns with that, if that's the case.
Okay. Do we have a motion from council? I'll move. Can we get a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
All right. Brokaw, please.
I have a motion by Councilmember Quiros Carter, seconded by Councilmember Montesino to introduce for first reading by title only, waiving full reading of the text and ordinance amending multiple chapters within Title 14 zoning of the Watsonville Municipal Code related to implementation of programs within the six-cycle 2023-2031 housing element and finding the actions exempt from review under CEQA. And introduce for first reading by title only, waiving full reading of the text and ordinance amending the downtown Watsonville specific plan related to implementation of programs within the 2023-2031 six-cycle housing element and finding the actions exempt from CEQA. Park?
Until all my questions are answered, no.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker? Quiros Carter?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
And Orozco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Item 10. C, Water Quality Report 2024, and the staff report will be provided by Water Division Manager Kaiser.
Courtney Limber, Director of Public Works and Utilities, and I'm joined by Beau Kaiser, our Water Division Manager, who will be giving this presentation, and there will be time for questions. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Courtney. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening our Public Health Goals Report, along with some regulatory updates. So the city of Watsonville Water Service Area encompasses the entire city of Watsonville. In addition, extends up to Coralitos and out to the coast in Pahro Dunes. Within our Water Service Area, we have one surface water treatment plant, along with 11 ground... Within our water service area, we have one surface water treatment plant along with 11 groundwater wells. Between those two sources, we provide up to six to seven million gallons of water daily. So tonight's report is going to focus on the calendar years of 2022 through 2024 and the water quality that we observed. We collected over, or we do collect over 4,000 samples annually. Majority of that sampling and testing is com- completed by our laboratory, which is a state certified laboratory. And within the Public Health Goal Report, we're going to be looking at just over a hundred health goal constituents. I'm not going to be talking about all of them, but it consumes about a hundred plus constituents. Now, our annual water quality report may look familiar to those on the council. It is something that we publish every January. It's available on our website. In calendar year 2024, we're happy to report that we meet all federal and state regulations. It is something that we have regularly done. We continue to have this excellent record. One thing that our consumers can be pleased with is that they continue to receive the lowest rates in the region, along with an excellent water quality. But tonight we're going to talk about the Public Health Goals Report, which is different than the annual water quality report in that public health goals are our ideal goals that we strive to achieve. They are not required, nor are they enforceable, but they are something that all water agencies aim to comply with. What a public health goal is, is it is a chemical in drinking water that would not cause a significant health risk if consumed over the course of a lifetime. What that means is eight glasses of water a day, every day for 70 years, and you would not encounter a health risk. It's a lot of water. It's a lot of drinking water. Not many people do that, but that is what a public health goal is aiming to achieve, that we can remove anything out of the water that would cause a significant health risk with that type of consumption. So of the hundred plus public health goals that we try to comply with, we meet 94% of them. We don't have time to go over those 94% tonight, so I am going to highlight the ones that we included in our report. Copper and lead actually are not in our source waters. Those are a result of our distribution system or residential plumbing. As a note, just last year, we did a survey of our entire water service area and we have zero lead service lines. There is no lead in our distribution system. But there are older homes in Watsonville and of those few, some of those can have lead detections in their homes, and that's why we report that. Nickel is a metal. It is detected in one of our wells that we actually don't use in normal operations. Total coliform is also known as bacteria. That's how we gauge the health of our system or our water system every week. We collect over 20 samples on a weekly basis. And over the course of three years, that's over 2,800. In three years, we had two positive samples. We did repeat samples on those two positive samples, which came back absent, meaning it's likely those two positives were false positives. So an excellent track record with total coliform or bacteria in our system or not in our system. Arsenic like nickel is detected in one of our backup wells that we don't regularly use. The last two, hexavalent chromium and PFOS, I'm going to save for a little bit later in this presentation, but they are also part of the report. But to summarize, both our annual water quality report and the Public Health Goals Report conclude that we meet all state and federal regulations for water. I mentioned hexavalent chromium and PFOS. Those are two upcoming regulations that we are going to be faced with. Hexavalent chromium has been a story for the city of Watsonville for several years now. It is naturally occurring. It is found in rock, soil, and in our case, in groundwater. Back in 2017, the state of California implemented the first ever hexavalent chromium maximum contaminant level in the country. What this chart demonstrates is up to that point, for the United States, there was no hexavalent chromium regulation. There was one for total chromium, which is related, and that level was a 100 parts per billion. California had already implemented a 50-part-per-billion limit, half of the rest of the country for total chromium. California went ahead and implemented an additional measure for hexavalent chromium to 10 parts per billion. So that is where we stand as of October 2024. We are being challenged to meet a maximum contaminant level of 10 parts per billion. And to put that in a little bit of context, if I were to take a glass of water from the city of Watsonville and bring it over to the state of Nevada or Oregon, Arizona, Washington State, that water would be considered perfectly fine. Bring it back into California and it is not meeting the 10 parts-per-billion level, that is 10% of the country. Our averages are between 12 and 20, so we are just above it. Yet we are above it, so it is something that we have to treat for. We have a compliance period of October 2026, which is fast approaching. Though there is state legislation intending to extend that compliance deadline, which we expect will happen. So how does this impact our source waters? Well, 73% of the water we produce has chromium VI levels above the 10 parts per billion. So that is six of our 11 wells. We are planning for it. We do have a plan. One of the things we've done is we've drilled a new well. That is a $6 million project that is ready, readying for completion. We expect to see that online in September of 2026. That was paid from the Water Enterprise Fund. We do plan to do treatment on our existing wells that are impacted by chromium VI. We have preliminary design that is underway now. It is going to be expensive. It's a little early to say how expensive it will be, but it will be something that we will have to seek out grant funding. We will be applying for loans and likely be raising rates in order to achieve that treatment cost for it. The other constituent of concern for us now is PFOS. PFOS also was not regulated until 2024. There is a federal reg- regulation for that. Uh, this compliance date is further out than chromium VI. It is in 2031. There, there is a little bit of movement on that. It is still not fully realized as 2031, but that is what we are planning for. The interesting thing about PFOS, you may have heard of it referred to as forever chemicals. It is something that is very present in our environment, not just in drinking water, but it is something, Teflon is a common PFOS product, things that have non-stick properties. So cookware, clothing, food packaging has had it in the past, personal care products. It is everywhere. Unfortunately, it is also sometimes in drinking water. Now they measure it in parts per trillion. And to put that into perspective, one part per trillion is the equivalent to a single drop of water in 20 Olympic-sized swimming pools. A single drop of water is one part per trillion. So analytical techniques are advanced enough that they can measure down to that level and PFOS is measured in parts per trillion. The allowable limit is four parts per trillion, so extremely low, but that is something that we are obligated to meet. So how does PFOS impact Watsonville? Not as significantly as chromium VI, but it is in two of our 11 wells. Those two wells are about 10% of our production. So it is an impact, not as severe as chromium VI, but it is still something that we will be seeking to treat and resolve. It's likely that we will explore new wells rather than treatment on PFOS, but that is still something that we are exploring. So needless to say, we have some big design, treatment and financial decisions coming up that we are working towards. So where are we now? I'll reiterate, we have a annual water quality report and a public health reg- goals report that are posted on our website to inform both yourselves and our community of where we stand. Again, we meet all state and federal regulations to date. We continue to inform our community of the chromium VI and PFOS developments. In the future, you as a council are going to hear more from us. Probably next month at one of those meetings, you will hear more about our chromium VI treatment design plan. And also come October, we will be submitting a compliance plan to the state of California, demonstrating that we will meet those regulations and ensure that our city water system continues to deliver safe, healthy and reliable, affordable drinking water. With that concludes my pres- or our presentation and available for any questions.
Do we have any questions from council? Council member Montesino?
Really quick, I know you're very ventured and, um, and very technical, but what the hell is PFOS and what, you know, I know you like to use those acronyms, but like I said, uh, for the common person, you need to write it, you know, yeah.
Sure.
Like I said, it's just, uh, you're going over my head. I don't know what that.
Apologies. Yes. PFOS, I'm kind of living in that world, so I forget that sometimes. But in, in simplest terms, if you've heard of something like Teflon, or if you've heard of non-stick cookware, the reason it's non-stick is because PFOS chemicals. Now PFOS stands for perfluoral alkyl compound, and I'm not getting that entirely correct, but it's a, it's a umbrella group of chemicals that are designed for to repel water mostly, but to be non-stick. And imagine anything from a pan? Oh, let's go back to that slide. Yeah. Here's some, here's some common examples of it. Carpeting has it. Electronics, fire retardant, all, all those things are, have PFOS in them, and that's how it gets in our environment.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Seeing that there's none, I'll open up for, uh, to the public. Do we have any comments from members of the public on this item? Okay. Seeing that there's none, I'll bring it back to council for a motion. I'll move.
I'll second.
All right. Bro call please.
I have a motion by council member Kidos Carter, seconded by council member Clark to accept the city of Watsonville water, water quality report for 2024. Clark?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Kidos Carter?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
And Orozco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Now under our new business, item 11. A, adopt Public Arts Master Plan. And, uh, the staff report will be provided by Deputy City Manager, Parks and Community Services Director, Kalabakib.
All right. Good evening, mayor, members of the council, Nick Kalabakib, Deputy City Manager and Parks Director. I'm really, really excited to be here this evening to present on our, uh, brand new proposed Public Art Master Plan. Um, it's been a long time coming. I'm joined here tonight, uh, by Jasmine Metcalf, who is with Designing Local, who has been our consultant through the development of this process. I'd be remiss though, if I didn't recognize a few other folks in the room. Maria Gomez Contra- Contrares is in the back, who has been our consultants, um, helping kind of guide the community engagement piece of this process as well. So she'll be here to answer any questions that you might have, um, on kind of mostly the process and how we've worked with the art community to get to where we are today. Uh, we also worked with a large number of, of artists and community members, um, through an advisory committee, um, on the development of this plan, and many of them are here tonight as well. So I really want to thank them for their time and seeing this all the way through to the end here this evening. So the recommended action is that the council adopt a resolution adopting the Public Arts Master Plan, also known as the 2025 Watsonville Arts Plan. Um, so why a public art master plan? Um, this plan overall supports the, and furthers the city's commitment to, um, supporting and fostering community arts and culture. As, uh, specifically out, specifically outlined in, um, our public art and percent for the art program and ordinance. It also helps to, to support and further our downtown specific plan. Um, that plan, um, has throughout the, the document, many references to the importance of art and culture in terms of helping to amplify the things that happen downtown and draw, uh, business and, um, kind of drive economic developments and, and create spaces that people want to live and work and do business and so forth. Um, it also supports many of our, our current CIP projects, namely the City Plaza Revitalization Project. Um, so how will the work in, in, uh, this plan be funded? Um, if you recall, back in 2022, the council adopted a percent for the arts fee, um, along with our art ordinance that set a 0.75% developer fee on construction costs with a cap of $75,000. And that ordinance defines how that, that fund, uh, or those funds in the art fund can be used. Um, so it can be used for, for a number of, of different, um, art-related activities, all of which are listed on, on the screen. I won't read through every single one, but just a few of the highlights. So for like the, the design and acquisition of new arts, for maintenance of arts, um, to sponsor performing arts, uh, for art facilities, um, art education programs, dealer fees, transportation and administrative costs related to art itself. And with that said, I'm going to pass things on to Jasmine, who's going to walk you through the plan.
All right. Thank you. Um, you guys received, uh, earlier in the summer, a update on the action plan. I'm going to talk just through what's changed with that. It's very little, just some language. Most of the recommendations are still in place. Today I want to focus on the elements of the plan that we haven't gotten to go over with you guys in depth that might be new to you as part of this process. Um, so like Nick mentioned, we kicked this process off around a year ago this month. Um, with our first visit, uh, from Designing Local side in September, we also had community engagement at Dia de los Muertos and throughout the winter, virtually and with our steering committee. In total, we held over 10 group sessions and I calculate around 60 or more participants. Some of our groups were as big as 15 in conversation, which was really great. We had many faces returning to different conversations to, to discuss new topics, which was excellent, and it was great. From an iterative approach to see people's kind of perspective change and grow as we went. Um, we also had a community pop-up session in which we did a mosaic activity to talk about what the community needs more of when it comes to the arts. And then we had a community survey, which received over 510 responses, 28 of which were in Spanish. And then our advisory committee, which Nick mentioned, has been, um, plugged into this process the entire time, meeting monthly over the last year, reviewing all the content that's been brought forward and providing their input on the plan recommendations and direction. Public art planning and arts and culture planning in this space is a little bit different than some planning processes you might see. There aren't really hard and fast rules for how to put a plan together. We generally like to do some really in-depth community engagement, figure out what that vision is for the community, bring you guys with some implementation-focused action items. But every community has a different desire for what they want out of this process. Um, the things that I think are really unique to Watsonville, and I can speak to that as someone who's been working all over the country the last few years on these types of plans, is that they really, really value authentic and community-driven expression. They don't want to see what other people have. They want to showcase what they have. A celebration of agricultural heritage, which is really important to the formation of this community that they believe deeply in art as a tool for social transformation that can change lives and set, um, generations on a new trajectory. That diverse heritage is a shared identity among community members and that the city can support in creating this vision for everyone. And so really, in summary, Watsonville community members want to see a socially rich, active, active and vibrant art scene in the community. Um, so what do they need to accomplish this? Uh, we heard a lot from artists directly, uh, process and standards for arts administration. So transparency and how to participate in city processes, um, so that they can create art and, and, um, cultural experiences in the community, an exploration of expanding funding or prioritizing funding to direct artist support. Pursuing a cultural district designation, which has already been checked off, just waiting to hear back, which is really exciting. Um, thank you to the Santa Cruz Arts Council for their work on that application. And then, like I mentioned, direct support for artists. So you guys have a lot of muralists, a lot of cultural creators in the community. Empowering them to create experiences is really important. Uh, one thing that we did as part of this process was we had a stipend set aside for some artist, um, led promotion and engagement of this process and of the plan's outcomes. And so we actually divided that, um, among two artists. We did a request for qualifications and we interviewed, uh, several people. We ultimately selected, uh, Vince Eureo and Genevieve Rico. Vince created the new arts identity. Vince created the new arts identity, which is kind of an umbrella brand for the entire arts community that they can share in. And Genevieve created a promotional video, which we would like to share with you today. Vince did a way better job explaining this than me, but he was really inspired by the mosaics, the color of fabrics and the papels, and the landscape itself, which kind of reads as a mosaic when you start to look at all the fields and the rows and the repetitions of things. And so he came up with this square, which then became a diamond design, and interwove that to showcase these different arts elements, from dance to visual arts to culture to agricultural landscape. Nick has some stickers here, which Hilda had created so fast, which is great. So this is kind of the unveiling of the outcome of that part of the project. It's really wonderful. It's on the plan itself. He also provided some additional lockups that can be used on letterhead or other things for co-branding among organizations. And so Nick's bringing you guys some stickers. And then I would also like if we could pull up the promo video as well, so you guys can see Genevieve's work.
Give me one moment, let me see if I can pull it up directly from YouTube, because from the links, it seems to be acting up a little bit today.
And I'll just provide a little bit more dialogue about what I think is really interesting about Genevieve's video and Vince's approach to this, is her video, the way it starts, feels so much like the way that Vince described his design. And so knowing that, without speaking to each other, they were kind of in agreement about what the arts identity feels like in Watsonville, which is, you know, this big sweeping shot of fields. And so I just thought that was a really cool outcome.
The audio seems to cut it out. Did you want to put it up, or you want me? Okay, let's see.
Apologies, I'm going to try my computer next.
of this plan. This is a little bit different than an approach that we've taken in the past. That was in response to the cultural district applications opening and California's definition being much more expansive. So cultural traditions, landscapes, shared histories, and people were all included as different cultural assets. And so I think you'll see in the document some individuals listed that are creating artwork in Watsonville, some cultural traditions that have been honored, as well as the stuff that you see physically in the environment, like murals and art spaces and those types of things. So I won't read this definition to you, but it's been included in the plan so that people can understand why the asset inventory was so expansive. So really, the inventory guidance was what's contributing to the community's cultural inventory or cultural identity, and who are the people and organizations, and all of those things that are creating this sense of place. Those categories are people, places, public art, organizations, and cultural traditions. And the community was really leveraged to help put together this list. So we had an interactive web map that our steering committee members and individuals of the public could contribute to. We also had staff steering committee and stakeholder submissions. And then we did some additional research just to make sure that it was really thorough and that it met all the requirements as part of that grant application. Like I mentioned, there were a couple of minor action plan revisions, really just added descriptive language to everything, clear steps for implementation, so that after we knew that there was broadly buy-in for the big framework of things, okay, how do we actually implement these things? Strategy one, step two, has been added to include the cultural district responsibility for the proposed arts advisory committee. An advisory board makeup has been provided to ensure the group is reflective of the Watsonville arts community. And then language has been broadened for action 4.3 to support the rehabilitation of spaces in downtown to support arts and culture. So really, just broadly steps to implement addition of one additional recommendation that just kind of follows through on an earlier one, and then broaden language for 4.3. We can refer back to any of these if you have questions on the action plan, but really...
Thank you, Jasmine. So we brought this plan to the Parks and Rec Commission back on August 7, and they made a recommendation that the council adopted following their recommendation. Sorry, I'm pushing wrong buttons here. So our next steps, as Jasmine mentioned, we actually did end up applying to designate our downtown as a cultural district. That opportunity through the state of California hasn't been available for the past five years, and so it was almost just, you know, like a magical circumstance that as we adopted, or as we're working towards adoption of this plan, that opportunity became available. It closed earlier this month, and so again, thanks to Arts Council Santa Cruz for helping us get that application together and push that out. So we're anxiously waiting for results of that. And then our next big step is going to be taking a step back and taking a look at our policies and processes and making some of the recommended changes from this overall plan. So again, the recommendation tonight is that the council adopt a resolution adopting our Public Art Master Plan, and that concludes our presentation, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Do we have any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Montesino?
Yeah, no, this is great work, and I see everyone, everyone here is excited. It's a long meeting, and they're still here, so yeah. Thank you, thank you for staying this long. It's been a long meeting. But, you know, you mentioned at the beginning that, you know, the fee that we collect on developers, how much do we have? And under this plan, would that, you know, that funding be available for some of these projects?
Yes, definitely. So to date, we've brought in somewhere around $350,000 that has been, that's been sitting in the fund. We have used some of that money kind of here and there for some one-off art projects, and then of course, to develop this plan. But, you know, when that fee was passed, it was really, I think, our intent to develop a master plan that would kind of guide how we spend the money year over year. And so that's really what this is for. That money is fully intended to be used to implement the action items that are identified in this plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Do we have any members of the public who wish to address council on this item? Please come up if you are.
So my name is Genevieve Rico, the filmmaker that did the promo trailer. I'm a born and raised Watsonville resident, and I just want to speak on the importance of being able to have art present in our community. Seeing it since being a kid to now being 35-year-old and seeing the changes that our community has gone through. As a filmmaker myself, I find a lot of the inspiration within my own community. Recently, did a short documentary on The Slice Project Pizzeria, got a Telly Award for that. So it went to go and showcase that our stories are meant to be told, and being able to be inspired by what we have in our community, and if that's through art, if that's through people, that's what's important. And I think being able to have this and being able to showcase that, I hope that it will go into the future and inspire, you know, more future artists, whether if that's a filmmaker, a muralist, a poet, anyone. So yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Good evening, Mayor Rosco, councilmembers and city staff. My name is Jim Brown, and I have the honor to serve as the Executive Director of Arts Council, Santa Cruz County. I'd like to thank all of you for your commitment to the arts, as demonstrated by this plan. It lays out a vision for the arts in Watsonville, inspired by community input, and the steps included will resource the incredible artistic and cultural community that calls Watsonville Let's see, lost my place there. This level of commitment to and investment in the arts is rare for a city the size of Watson, in scale of Watsonville. Everyone involved should be incredibly, incredibly proud of the work you've accomplished, and I know that other cities will be inspired by the work you've done. The Arts Council has been a partner in this process for the last number of years and will continue to work with you to implement this plan in the years ahead. I'd like to specifically thank Deputy City, City Manager Nick Kalabakib for his commitment to this plan and all the work he and his team put into it. I'd also like to call your attention to one point in the plan, and that's to make the city of Watson, or the downtown of Watsonville, a cultural district. There is a, there is a new state law, AB 812, that allows cities to designate a portion of their affordable housing stock for artists within the bounds of a cultural district and in some of the areas surrounding it. So as we celebrate this commitment to the arts today, let's continue to find ways to make Watsonville a welcoming and affordable place for our artists and culture bears. Thanks for all you do.
For those of you that know me, you know how much I hate public speaking. Good evening. My name is Rebecca Garcia, and I live in District 5. I currently serve on the Equity Committee for the Santa Cruz Arts Council. In the spring of 2014, I was a member of the Watsonville Parks and Rec Commission. At one of the meetings, I asked, what can we do to support the arts and artists in Watsonville? The response was, there is no money to support the arts, and it was dropped. However, artists in the community began to come together and have discussions about the arts in Watsonville. Soon after, the Santa Cruz Arts Council began to join them. Consequently, the council began to offer more grants to South County artists. Since then, the Arts Council created the Watsonville Arts Center, and an arts nonprofit, Arte de Corazon, was also created. So a movement for the arts began, and eight years later, in 2022, when I was on the city council, we adopted the ordinance for the percent for the arts program. The council wanted to support and increase public art for Watsonville. I now want to thank the current council for taking it further in adopting the Watsonville Arts Plan, that will definitely create an environment for the arts and support our local artists. I'm here this evening to speak about your strategy one, step three in the arts plan, which is to apply to become a California cultural district, as Jim noted. You have identified some of the benefits of becoming a culture district, which includes retaining artists, creating new businesses, and increasing tourism. One of the benefits that is missing is by becoming a culture district, Watsonville would qualify for Assembly Bill 812, which reserves 10% affordable housing for artists. Some of our local artists are displaced by the extreme high cost of housing in Watsonville. So I'm here to you to request, as you become a cultural district staff, to please direct staff to...
Thank you.
I only have two sentences. Please allow me a mayor. Okay, thank you. So I'm here to request that you become a cultural, as you become a cultural district, direct staff to research how Watsonville can apply to AB 812, to provide affordable housing to our artists. Artists are another group that needs to be considered as Watsonville attempts to provide more affordable housing for residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. Now, really, when it's District 2 again. I sat on this council when we first started this venture. I'm not as far gone as Rebecca, but I'm grateful that it's continued and moved forward, and I think we just need to finish it up, because I remember helping out paint on the Mona Lisa when I was an at-risk kid. So if an at-risk kid can become a city councilman through the arts, anything is possible.
My name, Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Consuelo Alba. I am a resident of District 5 and director and co-founder of the Watsonville Film Festival. As you know, we have been presenting the Watsonville Film Festival since 2012. We are getting ready for the 14th Annual in March 2026, and I'm here to express my strong support for the Arts Master Plan. I want to thank you for recognizing the vital role that arts and culture play in the life of our city. The arts are not just about creativity and expression, they are about community, belonging, and economic vitality. A vibrant arts community makes our neighborhood stronger, brings people together across cultures and generations, and makes our city a place where people want to live, work, and visit. Investing in the art is also an investment in our creative community, econo, I'm sorry, our creative economy. Artists, cultural workers, and creative businesses generate jobs, stimulate tourism, and drive innovation. And this is specifically relevant to the filmmaking ecosystem we currently have in our region. When we support the arts and film, we are also supporting small businesses, local restaurants, and many other industries that thrive with them. The master plan provides a roadmap to nurture and expand this creative ecosystem. By approving it, you are not only affirming the value of the arts, but also committing to a future where creativity and culture are central to our city's growth and well-being. Thank you for your vision and your leadership to start this whole process, and I urge you to approve this plan and help ensure that our arts community and entire community continues to flourish. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Doctora Victoria Banyales. I'm the Watsonville Poet Laureate. I was invited to read a poem. I don't know if I can come up here twice, because I actually had other comments as a civilian that I wanted to make. I strongly support the Watsonville Arts Plan. The only thing that I would ask us to consider are the literary arts, because it's heavily focused on visual and performative arts. But we have an opportunity to collaborate, and I'm so proud of our city that we have a Watsonville Poet Laureate and the Youth Poet Laureate. And, but we also have Journal X, and we also have the Writers of Color, Santa Cruz County, and we also have Circolo de Poesas and Writers, and all these opportunities for us to bridge art and... and the visual arts and the literary arts. So that was the only thing that I was like, "That seems to be kind of missing." And we are collaborating. Like, we had a wonderful poetry reading a couple weeks ago at Arte del Corazon to try to, again, bridge the visual and the literary arts. And we have some amazing writers in our community, like Jaime Cortez, author of Gordo, and Crystal Gonzalez-Avila, who just published Pedacitos, and she was at the Watsonville Center for the Arts last week. And then I also have a new book out for poetry. So that was what I wanted to say, but I strongly support the Watsonville Arts Plan. It's beautiful, it's needed, it's going to bring a lot of healing to our communities. And if I can't come up and read a poem, I'm happy to do that, but if not, I shall go sit back down. So thank you all.
Thank you. I'm sorry, no, we need to make sure that we stick to the time. Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Since I waited this long, I might as well come up and say something. Okay, good evening, everyone. My name's Yesenia Molina. Hello, everyone out there, too. I work for the Arts Council Santa Cruz County, and I'm the Watsonville Arts Program Manager. But I'm also a community member and artist and so much more. I have a three-year-old daughter, and I have one on the way, as you saw as I was walking up here. And as a mother of an aspiring artist, I'm so grateful to see that our community and local government are coming together to support this master plan for the arts. It's going to be something that'll guide Watsonville in the future and make sure that the arts continue here in our community. Being a part of the committee, I was thankful to be invited to be part of the committee. And so as being part of the committee, that gathered community feedback, listening to people's stories, participating in sessions, and sharing my own input, it's been very meaningful, like a really meaningful experience for me. It's helped me feel a little more seen and valued as an artist here in Watsonville, and I'm excited for what's ahead and look forward to the arts bringing even more color, vibrancy, and life to us all here in Watsonville, because that's what art is, it's life. And I'm excited for this to get approved. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, especially Mayor Mario Orozco and board members. My name is Jose Humberto Camacho. I have been living in Watsonville close to 40 years, now in Area 2. I have four children. I'm the director of activities for all the small organizations. We offer, you know, a music program, we have a mariachi band with children and youth participating in the mariachi band. We have a soccer program and a folkloric dance program. So basically, I want to say thank you for your effort, you know, and your support for these Watsonville Art Plans. We need it. We need it. You know, my children now, they are adults. And basically, because I play the guitar and I love reading and sometimes writing, they had the opportunity to, some activities, art activities. So basically, when you approve this plan, this master plan, our community, especially the youths and children, will benefit. I think they also deserve an opportunity to explore and practice arts, all different kinds, reading, writing, you know, music, painting. Now, by firsthand, I can tell you that arts is an essential part of our souls. Music. Mexicans, "Are you happy?" Hey, music. Are you sad? Music. "Te dejó tu novia?" Music, romantic music. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I was going to suggest if someone wants to read Dr. Penwales's poem, they can, it has not spoken, maybe--
Someone, another member of the public? Okay. All right, so I'll bring it back to council for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the master plan.
I'll second.
Comments as well?
Yes, so let's do comments.
I think this is great. I want to kind of go from what council member, former council member Garcia was talking about. I got here in 2014 as well, and it seemed like it was an arts desert. There was really nothing. And at that time, schools had already cut a bunch of programs, and it was pretty bleak. And I know some people stepped up and started bringing ideas to, you know, brighten up Watsonville. And I think that was great. I actually, I feel like I've seen an arts movement in our community. You guys organized, and we are here today with what I see a thriving community of artists and of artists of all type. We see visual, we see performance art, we see, you know, the film festival through film. I wish we could see musical theater, that's my favorite kind of art. But, you know, one day, you know, different types of art will be coming into Watsonville and continue adding into it. And, but I like where we're going. And, you know, I look at like our structure that we have here. That was a concrete slate. And until, you know, you came and you brought this great idea that, you know, I was able to support, and now people comment about it all the time. And I think some people were so used to not having any, you know, kind of art around the city. They got used to it, and they were kind of hesitant at first. But now that we're seeing, you know, murals pop up and, you know, you know, there's music in the park, and people are actually talking about it. And these are just regular-day residents. So I think that, you know, the movement has been very successful. You know, all the hard work has been successful. And so I want to say congratulations to you guys. I mean, you really, you brought something to our community that we were needing, and we especially need it during times like now, right? And like you were saying, right now, through art, we can express if we're happy, if we're sad. You know, we are able to express, you know, emotion. And so I really want to say thank you again for, and let's keep on moving forward. This is just the beginning right here. We're setting the tone, right? And now there's going to be some financial help that, you know, the council was supportive of bringing to, you know, make sure that we continue moving forward with the arts in Watsonville. I don't want to go back to 2013 or before when there was nothing. You know, we need to continue moving forward. If you go to Europe and other countries, there's art everywhere. And so I feel like we're playing a lot of catch-up now. So anyways, I'm completely excited to be, you know, supporting this master plan and making the motion. And I hope it's unanimous. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Council Member Kidos Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to keep my comments brief because it is a little bit past my bedtime. I was on the council when we adopted that arts fee, and thank you to my colega who was supportive of that and brought that number up. I was really proud. That was one of the biggest accomplishments that I felt I could really be proud of. And I just want to say that this is the kind of investment that I want to see in our community. This is really investing in community, this is investing in youth, this is youth development, this is crime and drug prevention. And art is resistance, art's a record, art is what we turn to in our darkest times. And it also tells a story about who we are as a community. And we see that, as Council Member Dutra said, we're seeing that, right? And it uplifts our spirits, and it just really, really tells the outside world who this community is. So I'm really happy to be supporting this. And, yeah, I feel really emotional. But I knew that Watsonville was vibrant and thriving, and now I'm glad that other people are starting to see it. So super excited on what's to come. And Dr. Banyales, I hear you. We need more literary arts. I'm a literary artist. Well, let's connect and we can make that happen. So, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Council Member Salsido?
I absolutely love the logo. I just wanted to shout that out again. It's so beautiful, and pairing that with the video as well, everything just really tied together so nicely. So thank you for all your hard work. Thank you all for staying so late. That's amazing. Thank you.
Yeah, I also want to thank everyone for sticking with us through the meeting. I think this shows your commitment to the arts and how important this item is for everyone. I also want to thank staff for their hard work on moving this item forward. I know I've been fucking thumbing up for quite some time, "When is it coming? When is it coming?" So I'm just excited that it's finally here, and we're about to vote on it. Really, I think this plan really reflects the creativity, the culture, and diversity in our city. It ensures that the arts are not just supported but accessible to all. And so by adopting this tonight, we're reaffirming our commitment to investing in the arts as a way to strengthen community, inspire our youth, and celebrate what makes Watsonville so special. So I'm very proud to support this important step in our city. So with that, roll call, please.
There was a motion by Council Member Dutra, seconded by Council Member Kidos Carter, approving a resolution adopting the Public Art Master Plan and the 2025 Watsonville Arts Plan. Clark?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Kidos Carter?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
And Orozco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Item 11. B, Review Projects Identified in Pavement Management Program Year 2 to 6. And we have a staff report by Public Works and Utilities Director, Len Burke.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Now's the real exciting topic, right? We'll give a moment for this to clear out. Murray Fons is going to be presenting. We're going to do a quick recap of Year 1, which was approved tonight on consent, go over Year 2, what we're planning, and then just touch on Years 3, 4, 5, and 6. So with that, I'll turn it over to Murray. There'll be time for questions, probably not as much as the previous item, but this is one of our favorite topics, so.
Good evening, Mayor Roscoe, members of the council. Thank you, Courtney, for the introduction. Before I begin, I want to share a jewel that I learned. As a road engineer, these are exciting bits of information. What do you call a chicken crossing the road? You call a chicken crossing the road poultry in motion? Ba-dum-bum. Okay, this is-- Tonight's presentation is built off of the pavement management plan that the council approved earlier this year. These kind of road projects take time, as many of you are well aware. It takes time to prepare improvement plans, to secure permits, to acquire right-of-way, to secure funding, and then we can put them out to bid and build them. It takes sometimes two years, often more than that. Earlier in the council meeting agenda on the consent, you approved the Year 1 projects, a contract to construct the roads shown at this location. These are preventive maintenance and light rehabilitation projects on six different roads throughout the city. Thank you for approving that. As a preface, I want to remind you that road construction projects fall into two categories. Depending on the condition of the road, if the road is in good condition, it's important that we do regular maintenance to prevent it from deteriorating. These maintenance projects involve slurry seals and minor pavement repairs. They're less costly, and we can do longer stretches of road. A slurry seal contractor is a specialty contractor. So we try and lump all those projects together, so we hire that contractor to do that work. Otherwise, if we hire a road rehabilitation contractor, they will hire as a subcontractor the slurry seal contractor and will have to pay a markup. So we try to lump them together in the different groups. Also, the closer you can put these roads together, the less you'll have to pay for movement. So we try and lump them by neighborhood. And then finally, the way the plan is set up, the odd years, Years 1, 3, and 5 are maintenance projects. A rehabilitation project is one where we remove and replace portions of the road. The Green Valley Road project that's completing now is a rehabilitation project. A preventive maintenance project would be the Oloney Parkway project that you saw last year. In both cases, the project involves new striping signage. So that is an improvement that falls into both categories. Rehab projects are more costly, we tend to do shorter lengths, and they came up in the even years of the plan. I'm going to focus on projects that we'd like to see happen in Year 2. These are rehabilitation projects. One is on Freedom Boulevard. As this slide shows, it is primarily in District 3. It would include reconstructing the roadway between Green Valley Road and Airport Boulevard. It would also construct a sidewalk on the mountainside of Freedom in the areas where none exists. It would include striping signage. To fund that project, which is $4.7 million, we propose to use $1 million of a California Air Resources Board, that's CARB grant. That funding needs to be expended by the year 2027. The city has or would use $1.9 million in either Measure D, Measure R, or SB 1, and we will be submitting a grant application to the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission next month for $1.8 million in funding. A second project is the Pennsylvania Drive Trail Repair. This is the area that's parallel to Pennsylvania Drive on the mountainside between Winding Way and Clifford Drive. It's in District 4. It's a $1.2 million project. We anticipate using Measure D, Measure R, or SB 1 for half the funding and requesting $600,000 from the RTC for the balance. A third project is the first phase of Clifford Drive. The work on Clifford Drive between Main and Freedom is such that we are proposing to construct it in two phases. The first phase would be between Main Street and Pennsylvania. It would involve $2.4 million overall project cost. We would use $800,000 in either Measure D or SB 1 funds, and we would request $1.6 million from the RTC. A fourth project would be the second half of Clifford Drive. It would cost approximately $2.8 million. It would run through Districts 4, 5, and 6. We don't have a funding source for that work right now. A fifth project is Pennsylvania Drive Road Repair in District 4. If you've driven this portion of Pennsylvania Drive, you know that on the direction that goes toward Main Street, a portion of the bike lane is closed because the embankment is failing and the curb is sliding down. We would like to construct it along with the path, but because of the $3 million price tag, we're not sure we would have the funding to do it, so we've broken it out as a separate project. We also have a series of maintenance projects that, should we secure funding, we could also include. Two of them are shown on this slide in District 1. One is on Harvest Drive between Beach and Riverside, and the other would be Locust between Beach and Riverside. The Locust project is a quarter of a million dollars, the Harvest Drive project is $400,000. Another maintenance project, this one in District 2, would be a portion of Marshant Street between Beach and Riverside. Again, we have an identified funding, it would cost $200,000. And then the fourth maintenance project would be Peck Street next to the Plaza. This one was penciled in when the study was done. We understand that with the Plaza project, it may be best to defer this work to another year. The price tag for it would be a quarter of a million dollars. So here's a summary. All four of those projects total $1.1 million. As I mentioned, we're looking to go to the RTC with three grant applications. The applications are due the 15th of next month, and the RTC will come out with recommendations in the following month, allow the public opportunity to comment on it, and then make a final vote in December and allocate the funding. As you can see, we're proposing funding for Freedom Boulevard, Pennsylvania Drive Trail, and Clifford Drive Phase One. We're looking to ask for $4 million. The overall project funding that the RTC is proposing is between $12 and $15 million. I'm not gonna bet any money that we'll get all $4 million, but by making sure we have a healthy ask, we're confident we won't leave any money on the table. We have the grant applications in a preliminary draft form at this time, and we will be refining them and submitting them when they're due next month. So these are all projects with price tags. Can we build them? Do we have the funds? This slide summarizes. The first table shows the cost of all the projects, totals $15.3 million. The second table, the left column, if we receive the $4 million from the RTC that we'll request, that will total 9.3, we'll still be $6 million short. What would we do if we don't identify a source? We may eliminate some of the projects on this list. The one project that I'm especially reluctant to defer is the Freedom Boulevard project, because we've got funding through a CARB grant, and if we don't spend it now, we could lose it. The column on the right would be if the RTC didn't provide funding. As you can see, we would be $10 million in the hole there. In that case, we'd probably have to look at one or two projects, scale back what we're proposing, which means building a lesser project, which would require maintenance sooner to make use of the funding that we have. I'm going to quickly go through years three through six. One of the values of having this plan is it allows us to plan for the future. The projects that we would build in year six, we're gonna start designing next year, so it's important that we know what they are. If they require right-of-way, if we need additional funding, we need to start on those things now. Apologies for the eye strain this chart shows, but in year three, year 2027, that's a maintenance year, and this proposes to do a whole bunch of maintenance projects in Districts Four, Five, Six, and Seven. The map shows in color where some of the improvements are proposed. As you can see, we're going back to some of the recent subdivisions and maintaining their roads. This is Seaview Ranch. Here's Bay Breeze. Here's Apple Hill. Here's Vista Montana. As is the case with these kind of projects, our preliminary cost estimates are preliminary. Once we get into the design and we look at what needs to happen, we may discover that there's a bit more maintenance work that's required, and we may need to adjust the length of this list. But at this point, this is what we're looking to do in year three. Year four would be a rehabilitation year, and based on the annual amount that we have of Measure D and SB1 of $1.7 million, we would be doing rehabilitation work on Second Street, Watson Street, West Beach, and Airport Boulevard. Year five would be another maintenance year, so the list gets longer. We would in year three, we focused on Districts Four, Five, Six, and Seven, and year five, we'd go back to Districts One, Two, and Three. And here you'll see, we're looking at neighborhoods to try and maximize the amount of money we can or the amount of roadway we can do. This area I'm showing here in light green is in and around rolling hills. Here is Sunset Cove. Over here, there's a series of roads along the Paharo River. These would be maintenance projects in year five, and in year six, a return to rehabilitation. These projects are all in District Four. They focus on the neighborhoods of Marinatha Meadows and Green Valley Highlands, too. Those roads are in need of either significant maintenance or light rehab. That concludes my presentation. We're here to answer questions and take your direction.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council members? Council member Kidos Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. It's probably obvious, but the projects that are yet to be determined for the funding source, those just don't qualify for RTC funds. Is that the issue with those projects?
Historically, the RTC has provided Watsonville 10% to 15% of the funding. Asking for $4 million would be closer to 35% to 40%. We could ask for all this, but staff doesn't feel that we get beyond the first three projects.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, seeing that there's none, I'll open it up for public comment. Do we have any members of the public who want to address council on this item? Seeing that there's none, I'll bring it back to council for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Okay, comments?
Thank you for, you know, I think it's great that we're going through the community and actually improving our roads. People are really, people like it. You know, unless those people like to complain all the time, we'll find a reason that they don't like a new road. I don't know why, but they do. But most people do like it. I just wanna make sure that you guys, and we've talked about this, so I'm just saying this for public comments, that we don't wanna let the roads that we've done on the more recent side or whenever fall so bad out of shape that they become reconstruction projects. So I do, we'll be supporting, you know, projects of slurry and maintenance projects to keep those roads in good shape, because we did invest like on Freedom Boulevard recently and further up the road. That wasn't done not that many years ago, and you can already see where in it, so it'd be nice to catch those roads before we have to completely replace them.
That one's part of year one. We'll be doing that.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that. I know you're gonna do that, but I just wanna say, let's continue doing that and throughout a lot of the roads that we've already invested in, so that we're not it's not looking like, you know, Freedom Boulevard between Airport and Green Valley, which that cannot come soon enough. Thanks.
All right. I think we're ready for roll call.
Mayor, there's no staff recommendation. What staff is doing is presenting you with the years.
But there's some motion here, but on the agenda.
Typically, we allow that, so that you all, if you have any official direction to staff, you may make that motion. It's more of a like a script to help the council kind of conduct their ideas.
Got it.
But there's no need for a motion unless you all have some official direction for staff.
That's just a comment. It's a good plan, you know, very well thought out. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Moving on to item 12.0, emergency items added to the agenda. There's none. Item 13.0, requests and scheduling future agenda items. Council member Dutra, and then Montesino?
So I, you know, aesthetics are really important to me, and so one of the things I've noticed as we drive around Watsonville is a lot of our shopping centers and businesses, they are not landscaped, and they look really rundown. I would like, you know, staff to create a very clear ordinance that, you know, has our businesses maintain their properties in a, I'm gonna say this in a way that we would have pride in our community. You know, overgrown weeds and, you know, blight, to me, is not acceptable. And so, you know, if we have an ordinance already in the books, maybe beefing up that ordinance to have better requirements for these business owners to maintain their properties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to get an update, you know, and hopefully in the short future about, you know, where we're at with wayfinding, the Placita, how long that's gonna take, because we put all these plans and, you know, you may have sent, you know, an email, like updates, but the community needs to know, like, so I'd just like to get a small update on that. And also, in the future, this is probably gonna take longer, but the specific plan, we invested so much money in the specific plan. What are we doing? Like, what steps can we take to, like, do something about it? Because, like I said, we didn't spend all this money. We didn't pay all this propaganda, all this planning for years, and nothing. We're sitting on a plan.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, seeing that there's done, we now adjourn the meeting at 9:42.